All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Can we please stand for the Budge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're actually going to try to run tonight's meeting straight quickly because we're actually going to be doing budget presentations to our elementary schools. So I'm going to ask quickly, can we have a motion to approve the minutes of ten four ten, please?
Somebody.
By Kent, seconded by Diane. Any amendments or corrections to it? All righty, see and none. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Correspondence folder, just start that around. It just has substitution reports in it. Combinations, good news.
Mr. Greenland, who is our family consumer science teacher, has shared with me that they continue to produce snacks for our open house, about 450 units for this year's open house. We do apple crisps at the New Boston Fire Department Charity Dinner. And there's an increase in the number of students going on to major in hotel restaurant management culinary. So we do want to share that information.
Thank you.
This Wednesday, October 20th, is the Blood Dress sponsored by NHS. It's open throughout the school day at Watkins' Bar, welcome. And also this Thursday is our first fall concert from the music department. It's going to be a great, um, great school evening there. It's going to be a lot of good music. And then last week, with kneecaps finishing up, I got a lot of great responses to the no homework policy that week. Just thought I'd share that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I thought that our, the school SAU presence yesterday at the Pumpkin Regatta was awesome. Stacy Buckley commanded a boat that did very well.
It was a rotary boat, so we'll give the boat it was credit.
Yes. It was a rotary boat. Lisa Palmerloo from Mountain View also was there. I was also pleased to see that the student council was there and also another grizzly organization, which-
Friends of Hockey.
Friends of Hockey. It was great to see them participating in a community event.
Stacy?
I just would like to, Peggy Zola, one of our elementary's teacher ops, was not able to be here tonight. She just wanted to report that Mapleup had 73 third and fourth graders run for student council this year. They selected 22 were elected and had their first meeting today. So nice turnout for that and nice anticipation of 22 is nice. I also would like to, just for the board members, it's kind of good news, but I would like to introduce Megan Bizarro as, who's our new food service director, just so you have a name to put with a face now, or a face to put with a name. So Megan's been a great addition this year.
Any other combinations, good news?
I don't want to repeat, but I, did you talk about kneecaps at Mountain View?
No, you talked about it at other schools, but not Mountain View. You should go right ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank MVP for donating food, et cetera, to the kneecap incentive program that we had. I think, I know from speaking with the seventh and eighth grade teachers at Mountain View, the incentive program was a, was a great way to get the kids focused and organized and ready for the kneecaps. And hopefully we can continue to do something like that in the future. I think it really, it worked well. The kids really bought into it. The other thing I'd like to say is that we had over 30 winners of the summer reading program. And the kids are going to take a field trip this week up to Mount Ponkinunik as a reward for doing reading over the summer. So I wanted to congratulate those, please.
Excellent, thank you. Any else? All right, we'll jump right to public comment. Public comment is only going to be at the beginning of the meeting, so if you have something you want to mention, you should do it now because we're going to quickly go through our committee reports and then we're going to go right into stuff and do, have our budget presented to us. So any public comment? You can just announce your name for the record.
Do I stay here?
You can stand wherever you like.
All right, well, I'll stand here, I guess. Maybe I should stand where the camera can see because I think the people will see this live.
Just announce your name for the record, Joe.
My name is Joseph Kelly-Lavassar. I am running for state senate in all of Goffstown and Fourwoods in Manchester. I'm from Manchester. I've been there for 100, 100 years. I hate to tell you how old I am, actually, but I've been a Manchester resident for 49 years. I graduated from our public schools, graduated from Memorial in 1979. When I graduated, went to Community College at night. And at 25, I opened a restaurant called Joe Kelly's. And from there, I went to school at night and got a master's degree and a law degree. So to me, education is a great way to expand your horizons and a great way to better your life, and I think I've been a good example of that. I served as an alderman in Manchester in 2000 and was very involved in a lot of the school issues that were, of course, budgets that were handled in Manchester.
Excuse me. I think this isn't appropriate.
Well, how about we just ask you to wind it up so it doesn't go too long, Joe?
Okay. Well, I just want to introduce myself and just let anybody know if they have any questions or concerns. One of my major concerns is downshifting from the state to the communities and the fact that we have to worry about those as budget issues. So that's what I wanted everybody to know. My name is Joseph Kelly-Lavassar. If you have any questions, you can call me at 622-7575. That's it. Thanks.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll see none. We're going to jump right into our standing committee reports and we're going to try to breeze through these so we can spend the time on the budget. Hank?
I'd like to move the manifest of $1,78,599.53.
Second. I didn't even have to ask for that. Any questions or you want to just run down the highlights of it?
The highlights are the total of salaries, $1,000, salaries, rather, $49,130. payroll taxes, $157,503.
It's $490.
$490, what did I say?
Forty-nine. I wish.
I'm sorry, shut up.
That was lightweight.
Yeah.
Public comment has gotten to me. Goffstown Truck Center for vocational trucking to Alburn in Manchester, $5,740. Special ed transportation.
Out of district.
Tuition.
Out of district salaries, you might say.
Basements.
$70,362. In addition, Ray had a conference call with our fund investors and everything went good Moody and first Southwest. It looks like we're going to get a double A rating. And everything seems to be on course with that and we're going to details. The tuition invoices went out to Dunbarton and New Boston. They went there for a nice month.
Do on November 15th.
That's it.
Okay, excellent. HR, Lori?
Um, we had our-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I'd take the vote in such a hurry so we can get to the budget. Anybody have any questions on the manifest? Thanks. All in favor of approving the manifest as presented? And that passes unanimously as well, right, Kent?
Mm-hmm. All right. All right, sorry, Lori, you're on.
There you are. You're on.
Yeah, we had our meeting last week. We actually have some policies to bring forward for first read, which I think are later down in the agenda.
Yep.
We'll have another meeting in November.
November 22nd, six o'clock at the SAU, right?
Yep.
Okay. CNE, Phil.
Very quickly, the committee discussed and directed CNE to reexamine the relationship between student class size and performance and optimal student class size. The last time we looked at that and evaluated the issue was in 2000, so we're going to update that. We'll come back to the board with a report. And if there's any recommendation that may be made with regard to policy, we'll pass that along to HR. We looked at SAT scores for the last four-year period. Without going into enormous detail in all areas, reading, math, and writing, there are significant differences over the increases, probably the most important thing to say rather than differences, moving forward from 2006 to 2010. And we're going to have a look at making some revisions in the curriculum cycle to meet some needs that have been identified and we'll come back to you with a report on that.
Anybody have any questions for Phil? All right. PNC, Diane?
We haven't met since we reported last. We continue on with our articles and our next meeting is November 1st.
We have one coming in this Thursday's paper, right?
We do, yes.
And what's the topic for this Thursday's?
The link between co-curricular and academic success.
All right, superintendent's report.
We've been very busy with budgets, 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 budgets. Tomorrow, Ray and I will be meeting with the bus company, just as our monthly meeting, to follow up with concerns and making sure the contract's implemented correctly. So we'll be following up with them on a couple of issues that have come up. This Thursday and Friday, Joe the Biker will be here in the district. Joe the Biker is a presentation for anti-bullying. He's a biker, I guess, who was bullied. He was a bully. He was being bullied, not the bully. And he talks about his experiences and so it's kind of our start off and kickoff. He will be, it actually was paid through a grant that New Boston received. They got him for two days, so they were able to share with the district. So he'll be in New Boston and Dunbarton at our middle school doing two presentations and at Bartlett, was what we were able to fit into the schedule. So he'll be here on Thursday and Friday, kind of starting us off. The board asked me to reschedule the School Boards Association workshop. I have rescheduled that for November 15th. That's your second meeting in November at six o'clock. I will try to get something for dinner at like 5:45. So for people coming right from work who would like to do that, we'll do that meeting in the conference room here so that we have some privacy and you can ask questions and then we'll have our regular board meeting here. If you can't make that meeting, if you could let me know, I just want to make sure that we have the majority of the board there and they don't come out to two people showing up. So if you can't make that six o'clock time, just let me know so that we can, I just have a track of who's coming or who's not. I am working on rescheduling the SAU board meeting. Denise will be calling everybody to see if it's possible to do it. I had sent down an email to do it on November 8th at seven o'clock. New Boston has negotiations that night, so I asked them if they would be willing to do it at six in New Boston and then they could do their meeting. So Denise is going to call around, see if that works for people. I don't anticipate it will be a lengthy meeting. It will be budget only. If that doesn't work for people, I'll look at another date, but I thought it seemed to, that date seemed to work for a lot of people, so I was hoping just an hour earlier might work. So Denise will be getting in touch with you about that. There was, if you notice by the roundabout, they've taken down the sidewalk markings where the sidewalks are. We had complaints about that, so I called Chief Sullivan, who talked to the contractors. They will be putting them back up tomorrow. So if anybody asks, those will be going back up. There were posts and tape so that at least we had some outline of where the sidewalks were for athletics going to Bartlett Park and kids walking to and from school through the construction. They've taken them down and so we asked for them to be re-put up because just for safety issues. There's no, with the, with the pavement gone for the road, there's no delineation between where the sidewalk is and the road is. So they will be doing that. And as was noted earlier, there is evidence that I was in the pumpkin, so.
But you came in second.
It was a great time. I came in second. I didn't recognize that the race was so serious as it was, but I took off and apparently I had the fastest motor, so it's a great time. That's all I have.
Excellent.
Stacy? Do you have any information of students and accidents in the rotary? Do you, have you gotten any information back from that?
That we've had any accidents since the rotary has gone up? Not that I've heard.
Okay.
And in fact, at some level, where the crosswalk is going, I almost think at some level it may be a safer route than where it was because actually a student can walk one length and then there's a divider and then walk the other, so you're not trying to cross two lanes of traffic maybe at the same time. But I haven't heard that there's been any issue so far.
I just wondered because I almost got hit by somebody on the way here tonight, so.
Yeah. And typically, if it was a student, I would have heard about it, but I haven't, I haven't heard anything, so.
Okay, good. Stacy, last meeting I asked about the breakdown for the kids at Addington Police Square, whatever it is.
Yep.
Did you send that in the superintendent's?
It was in the superintendent's notes.
I missed it.
We had 15 total. And now you're going to ask me.
Could you just send it to me again, please?
Yep, I'll send it to you individually. Yep, by email, is that okay?
Yeah. Well, for some reason, I don't get it.
It was 15 total. Most of them were at Bartlett. Nine, I think, were Bartlett.
Right, and one of the ESL.
ESL, yeah, that was right on there. I'll send it, resend it to you.
Yeah, the ESL was on there?
Yeah, at the bottom.
Any other questions for Stacy?
All right, we're going to jump right up. Stacy, write it down. We have a parent request seeking board approval to enroll in Mountain View Middle School before the closing on their home on November 12th, 2010.
Yeah, we have a request from Kathleen Schnabel. And she is, is that how you say your last name?
Schnabel.
She's actually here. She is requesting, they are currently living in Hooksit and her daughter Emily is a seventh grader. They're moving to Goffstown, I believe, on November 12th. You're definitely closing on your house.
Yes.
And she is asking to allow her daughter to begin school on October 25th, which is a week before progress reports are issued, which is about the end of the semester. She also plays basketball, so she'd like her to be able to be here to try out for basketball and kind of get acclimated before the season kind of starts and get acclimated to the school. I did speak with Jim, the principal, who had no issues with this, so.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move that the board grant, the request with the typical stipulations regarding transportation.
Second.
Yeah, because you have to spread your own transportation until you move into the district.
Anybody have any questions on it? All right, all in-
Can we just, can we make sure that in the minutes it's reflected that if the closing doesn't happen on November 12th, you let us know and it would need to come back to the board?
Absolutely.
Okay. You'll be able, you're willing to amend your motion?
Yes.
Does that affect your second? Thanks. All in favor? And that passes unanimously too. Thank you.
You can just go register her at the middle school.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Mountain View Middle School, eighth grade field trip. They're looking for approval to go to Salem, Massachusetts on October 26th.
Yeah, that is an eighth grade team request.
Are they going for the entire day?
Yep, they're going to Salem to the-
House of Seven Gables.
Yep, the tip of a whole. It's a repeat, it's a repeat out of state field trip. They're going on October 26th, leaving at 8:45, returning at 2:45.
Just one team is going, or is it the whole grade?
It's 101 students, so it would be not the, it would just be one team.
That's two teams.
Yeah.
Oh, just one team.
Just one team, eight, one.
Okay. What are the other two teams doing?
I don't know.
Anybody, anybody like to make a motion on that? Hank, to approve, disapprove?
You don't need to make a motion.
Oh, that's right. Unless we make a motion not to. Thank you.
I have a, I have a second field trip, if I could just slide it in.
Sure.
The high school, the American literature teachers are looking to plan a trip to Concord, Massachusetts on Thursday, November 4th. They'll visit three historic sites, Walden Pond, the Old Mans, and Sleepy Hollow Cemetery. Again, this is a repeat field trip out, but it's out of state, so it's one they do every year, that, those classes.
Anybody have any things, questions or comments, motions?
All right, we're going to move on. Public session minute discussion.
Do you want to talk to that floor?
I think you had mentioned to me about wanting to discuss that possibly or not.
You can postpone it. No, actually. I mean, I don't mind speaking to it. It's, after, after reading the attachment from, I think it was the 9/23 superintendent notes about the ceiling of the minutes, after I studied that, I realized that minutes needed to be available five business days after public meetings. And I just wanted to ensure that that was actually happening both at the, at the board level and at the subcommittee level.
At the subcommittee level, the assistant superintendents are very good at getting them in in a couple of days. And Deb's going to, you're going to have them in at the time every week, right, Deb?
Yep.
All right, see? So they are available at the SAU within the five business days. They're not necessarily posted immediately to the website. Sometimes it takes a day or so for it to get to the website.
And the law doesn't require posting to the website.
The law doesn't require that. Just be made available.
Right. And they are available at the SAU.
So we're absolutely complying with the law.
As is not unusual, these things sort of take on a life of their own once they get started. And Jen, as part of her inquiry, forwarded along the statute. And wanting to know what the statute said, I read it. And one of the things that, we don't necessarily need to do anything about tonight, but I'd like you to think about and we can get you all the statute is, is the statute sort of defines what meeting minutes need to capture. It doesn't prescribe a maximum, but it absolutely prescribes a minimum. And I think that there's some value to understanding what the minimum is because we're conducting business here and what the, what the statute speaks to is what you need to do in order to capture the minutes of a business meeting. So I would ask, I'll be happy to forward the statute along and circulate it to everybody and we can revisit it maybe in the middle of November.
If you want, I can attach it to my superintendent's notes and everybody will have it.
Perfect. Thank you. Because right now, currently on our website, we are posting the school board minutes. We're not posting the minutes from committee, committee minutes. All right, CAS committee, we need to, we've been postponing this so that we can review more information for the last couple of meetings. We both should have had the Tony Fallon's report as well as one from Hunter, which kind of outlined this, and this, these reports were actually paid for from the, from the committee. It was not something we did, but we did ask them to come back with some proposals and ideas. And they're looking for direction from us now as to, do we want them to start pursuing this? I don't know if they shared anything more with you, Stacy, on what they were looking for directions?
No, I think, well, I think the direction comes more from me as to, does the, does the board want to adopt the recommendations? Do you have more questions? Do you want to go? Because clearly, as we're looking at the budget process, it's, it's a question of, right now, for example, Barnard Park, the $250,000 was in the budget. We, I have since cut it out of the budget.
That was for the track.
For the track, again, looking at the budget, but the question continues to be, is that the best effective place to have the track? They're recommending we move it to the high school around the football field. And so I, I guess I, I'm looking for a direction from the board as to whether those recommendations you'd like to adopt. Do you have more questions? Do you want more research? Do you want more information? Kind of where, where, where would you like us to go with those recommendations? We asked them to look at our co-cur, at our facilities for both athletics and co-curricular, the theater in particular, and make recommendations to us as to what we should be doing with them.
At the very least, I think that some of the projects that are outlined in the reports should start the CIP process because it takes six years. So at the very least, we should get those things into CIP, the things that we feel are, are needed.
So I guess that would, is, is the board in consensus that what they're proposing and just a quick outline of that would be not necessarily redoing Barnard Park, but moving the track to the high school around the football field, installing lights and turf, putting in addition to the auditorium for more seating and more storage. Those were kind of the big, there were some adjustments to the back parking lot, which we may look at sooner rather than later, only because I think there's some safety issues. But those were, in general, the ideas and the concept they had. And some of that plays into like CIP, which is, we certainly, as a school district, wouldn't invest $250,000 to fix Barnard Park if we're then going to build a track and field here at the high school.
Jen?
I did have a question on the Huntress Associates. Given now that the district is very focused on safety, I think it makes sense to move forward with the parking lot issues that are at the high school. The, the bottom dollar line in their estimate was $33,000, of course, plus the 8% design and engineering and the 10% construction contingency. But yet you recommended $100,000? Improve event parking in Hardscape area. This is scheduled in CIP for 2012, 2013?
I think that likely probably involves other issues as well.
Okay. Was, was that your suggestion or is that what was in CIP already?
That's been in CIP, I think, for a couple of years.
It has been, yes.
I think it's one that just keeps, since I've been here, we've been talking about the back parking lot of the high school. And the goal there was to be, to make, and we actually met with Carl Querem from the DPW to look at that piece of, piece of, the land back there and whether we could make an entrance and an exit in the back of the high school. Right now, the students and parents and buses all enter through the front and the students drive around the back to the parking lot. There is actually enough roadway to make it a two-way lane and then having an exit and an entrance on both sides of the parking lot so that you, making that center a walkway only, a walking path, so that it was safer for students, have an entrance or an exit on one of the two sides so that it would be, students would go in, park, and then come out and go out, so that it was safer, making the left, the roadway on the side of the building one-way, which it kind of is a one-way, but there's no signs. It's, people drive both ways, which obviously it's a very thin road. So that was kind of the overarching plan. It involves some drainage work. It involves some other piece, some escapes, taking trees down, but it was very doable for around $30,000, DPW said. And that was just a rough estimate.
Do you need a motion or are you satisfied with consensus about the direction?
I would think we'd have to make a motion, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see a motion to adopt the recommendations and then I could work with either the CAS committee or try to figure out what our next fees would be in this process, which would probably getting, be getting some more finite numbers, some more information, really feeling it out more and meshing out the plan a little bit more.
How about a motion to accept their recommendations?
Second. We'll get Diane, she got it. Any other questions?
I have a question. Like, how far out would we be trying to put this in CIP?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at CIP. We'll have to look at that whole piece of the puzzle. I mean, certainly one thing that you would want to consider would be if you were looking in 2012 at a bond for school renovations, is that an opportune time? If Building Eight comes back to put that in there as well and get them all done at one time? That, that's a thought.
I like the ideas, obviously, that are in there. I don't think we can afford it in the very near future.
Yep.
Most of those.
I mean, the, the big thing that, I mean, we're, we're starting, it's starting to cost us more. The track isn't getting any better. I'm guessing in a year or two, they may say they won't hold the track meet there.
Well, they're not holding any meets there right now. They're only using it for practice.
So, you know, but at some point, it's going to become not fixable that we can have a track meet there. I'm actually meeting with the high school administration because the theater department has asked for another stor, portable storage trailer because we have stuff stored in the building that no longer fits and doesn't meet fire code. So again, that's another $1,200 a year cost, you know, so there's, we're starting to incur costs. The theater, obviously, we have a lot of chairs that are broken, that are not, you can't sit in, not functional. So we, again, we don't want to invest money in something that we're going to take out or, you know, I don't want to throw good money after a bad project. I'd rather try to fix it from the start and do it the right way. But again, we can't wait 10 years to do that.
Maybe a thought would be anything that we have to do to the buildings, the theater and things like that, be part of the 2012 bond.
So if the board's okay now that I have, did you vote on that?
No, we haven't, no. Just any more questions? Just any more questions? All in favor of the motion? And that passes unanimously as well.
Right. And so, maybe what I can do as the next steps is to maybe meet with CAS and meet with administration and talk about kind of what are the next steps of this process? Where do we go? How do we get more definitive costs? How do we identify more clearly what it is we would be doing and what that might be?
Identify which needs are.
Our most important, right? What are the priority pieces? And maybe we can do it in fees and kind of timelines for that. So, let me, let me work on that as a next step.
And your spare time?
Yeah. Got lots of it.
You had time to roll the pumpkin, so.
Leave my magic wand and make more time.
You don't get hazard day either.
That magic wand was my son's super score. We actually have some first reads. Ray, do you want to run down them real quick?
Sure.
Do you have any highlights, if there's anything you should know about?
They're all required. Most of them are straight language out of the RSAs, so there's not much we could do to them if even we want to.
Gone are the days when policy should be brief, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially the JIC with the bullying policy. Even the definitions are straight out of the RSAs of what they are and how they are.
Are the first reads are going to be on EBBD, the air indoor qualities, JH, student abscuses and excuses, and JICK, pupil safety and violence prevention based through bullying. So, those are three that are coming up first read.
And if the public, again, I'll put out there, has any comments or thoughts on either the policy on pupil safety and violence prevention or student abscuses and excuses or would like a copy of that, please either mail either myself or Brian Bulkey and we can get you a copy of that policy and you can give us public input.
They're on the website.
They're on the website.
I'm gonna save the paper. Save the tree.
One second question on JIC, definition number five, perpetrator. You're saying that comes right out of the RSAs, but noticing the language, perpetrator means a pupil who engages in bullying and cyberbullying. Question the language, does it have to be a pupil? We do have other people at school functions who may or may not be pupils, but who actually may engage in bullying activity. And I didn't see anything on this policy.
This is, this is a student policy only. We have adult policy, we have, we have policies that prohibit bullying between peers and, yeah, this is strictly for students.
Yeah, and that one is directly out of the RSA.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for that? Alrighty, they will be coming to our second meeting in November for a vote. And now, we get to jump. I should ask, any other legal business members in front of the board maybe going to discussing our budget?
Can I just do the notifications that are up?
Oh, sure.
So, these are just three notifications. We have three, not quite student teachers, more like classroom observers coming in from, two from Southern New Hampshire University, Amy Gamache and Amanda Fornier. They're going to be doing some kind of practicum observations and a student from Manchester Community College, Christine Neville. And all three of them will be at the middle school.
Alrighty. I'll just double check and make sure anybody, any school board members have any other legal business they want to bring in front of the board? Alright.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm running into, and I think Ray is maybe having a problem too, with the process for handling budget committee questions. Now, what we did this past year was everything went through the chairs, chair of the budget committee to chair of the board and back and forth. Well, apparently now, the chair of the budget committee doesn't feel that that, that practice needs to go on.
Well, actually, we changed it slightly. We asked them to have Dan email to a specific email account where you, me, Stacy and Ray would get a copy of it to take care of it.
Right. So that was, so that we could keep a record.
I believe he would prefer Suzanne just keep the questions and get them to us.
But the problem was, we had three years ago complaints saying, well, Keith, we asked you for that in the meeting and it was always, and it'd be like, I had no formal request for it. If somebody briefly mentioned it during discussion, it's hard for us to keep track. So, I didn't want them, for anyone to feel that their questions were being ignored or not answered by the board and the administration.
Plus, we don't have to, want to be dealing with questions from 14 different people.
Right. And when they start emailing them outside the meeting, that makes it even more complicated for us to track and make sure we have responded to all of these. Because the emails would sometimes come to myself, they sometimes would go to Ray. That's why we asked that, we have one account so we can track them, we keep our answers, we know what's come in, what's gone out, so for future reference. It was basically just in order to try to make sure that every question was asked and answered. Because some light discussion between people at the meeting can very easily be missed if they're not summarizing it and putting it in an email. And Dan then also copied the entire budget committee, so if anything was missing, they could let Dan know, oh, you know, we'd ask to have this answered as well. And that was, that was actually very helpful for us.
I just would like to know what our reaction is to the change.
I would prefer not to make the change. I'd like to be able to track it and make sure that we answer each question. I did like the fact that he copied the entire board, so if there was a missing question, they could let him know.
And it's going to devolve from that?
I mean, I'm sorry, what's, I don't understand.
Is that how you're doing it today?
That's how we were doing it, yeah. Well, I would say, Dan, I don't think Dan's put it into practice yet this season. I don't believe.
In the past, it's always gone, the question and answers has always gone chair to chair.
Right, from Dan to me.
So, Dan emailed Keith, who then would either CC me or forward me the emails. We would get a response, send it back to Keith, who would send it back to Dan.
So, we set up a specific email account for him to mail it to so that we would be able to easily track it.
Is there some movement to change that?
Well, Dan seems to want to make that change. He'd rather just have Suzanne keep track during the meeting and come back with the And I think that's making it almost difficult for us to track every question that's come in and make sure they've been answered.
And it eliminates the triage process on that side of the equation. Because there may be duplication, there may be a decision that some of the questions that may come up don't necessarily need to be addressed. I think it's a perfectly good mechanism as designed and don't see any reason to depart from it. Jen?
I hate to see Suzanne kind of put in the middle too, in that if someone doesn't think their questions are getting answered, that it's her fault.
Correct.
I'd much rather go through the system that we've been using where we know what questions have been asked and what questions have been answered so that we do have that tracking. Because I do remember the other year, it was, I mean, it was kind of brutal because people kept throwing in, my questions weren't answered.
I share Jenny's concern. That's the same concern I have.
I think your system benefits everybody.
I do. I mean, especially since Dan was CCing it, I think it worked out well so that if any questions were missing, we could find out right away.
Okay.
And I did send a night mail to Dan to that effect, I think, two weeks ago, so.
At the very least, they should all go, even if they're not coming from Dan, they should go to that account.
Well, the problem is if you start getting a bunch of different ones, it could get confusing as to duplicates coming in and make sure that they're actually official questions from the budget committee. Because technically, they can't act as individuals. They can ask as residents' questions and we have gotten some of those as a resident and we do respond to those under the right to know laws. Technically, the budget committee as a whole should be formulating their questions they have on the budget and sending them to us.
I agree. They should follow through, Dan.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, we're going to jump right into budget presentations and we'll let Stacy and the administration take over the floor.
I think I made enough for everybody, so feel free to take one.
Alright, this is a coupon. I thought I was going to take someone.
I know. So, for tonight, how we're going to do it is I'm going to do an overview of the budget, kind of how we got here, what we look like compared to the state, different, some kind of data points. And then I'm going to go over the 000 lines, which are your district lines. Just for clarification, they are not the SAU lines, they are the district lines. So, the line, the SAU assessment is within those, but these are the lines that are district lines, so they're staff that are district-wide. A lot of people confuse that with SAU, but you can send them right back there. And then we have our three elementary principals. We have Suzanne, David and Leslie, who will be speaking their individual budgets. So, we'll get through everybody today.
But on my side, we're going to do middle school and high school.
So, the budget process, just to kind of go over where we started, where we'll go to. Each principal begins within their building, meeting with their staff, meeting with their department heads here at the high school. We have department heads for each curriculum area. So, they meet with them, they talk about what our needs are, what our expectations are and how we're going to get there. So, they develop budgets within their building. This year, as in last year, we developed our budgets based on a zero base, meaning that every line item started with zero, and they had to evidence what it was that they wanted in there. So, when you review your budget in the line-by-line items, you'll see exactly what it was at their budgeting. So, under books and printed material, it will say, we needed new textbooks for this or we're buying 12, you know, math textbooks for this. So, it will be outlined for you. The SAU administration, so myself, Mary Claire, Brian, Ray and Carol, then met with each principal. We spent two days doing this. We met with each principal and Jerry Aggett and Gary Geralman and reviewed our budgets. We looked at line by line, again, looking for adjustments, looking for changes. At that point, I reduced the budget by items that I thought were kind of more nice to have, that were things that were recommended, but we had discussions, can we put things off, can we wait? And so, some line items were reduced by me. Principals received those changes and we had opportunities to make additional adjustments if they felt there were some items that I cut that they had really good rationale for that we put back in. And so, we kind of went back and forth that way. You'll receive, you'll review the budgets tonight and on Wednesday. And then next week, Monday and Wednesday, we'll have budget workshops again where you'll have an opportunity to ask me questions, to go through the budget line by line, look at it. And then on November, November 1st, your next meeting, you will hopefully at that point, unless we have other questions, pass a budget along to the budget committee. On Saturday, November 13th, at 9:30 in Town Hall, we'll be reviewing that budget with the budget committee, or I'll be reviewing that budget with the budget committee, who will then make decisions on the budget from their side. So, it is a pretty comprehensive process. Lots of people look at the budget. It isn't just me, it isn't just principals. We spend a lot of time reviewing it, going line by line, making sure things are in there, making sure it's accurate. So, it is pretty comprehensive. And I put this in here just as a reminder, a first grader is only a first grader once. That's all we have them for. We have students 180 days. What we do with them in that 180 days is of utmost importance to us as educators. We don't have an opportunity to say, we're sorry, first grader, you're not getting this this year. You can't have that activity, you can't go on that field trip, you can't have that textbook, you can't have more books to read. We can't do that again. We have them for only one year in that grade. So, it's important, I think, for the public, for the community, for the school board to recognize that fact that we can't make up a year for these kids. It is what we have and we have to, we have to treat them with respect. We have to know that, we have to educate these kids to the best of their ability. You know, 180 days a year isn't, isn't a lot of time. Certainly isn't, it goes pretty fast. So, what were some things we considered when we did this budget? And I'm probably standing right in front of this one. We considered the current economic climate. We certainly know where we're at in the economy. It's pretty much out there. We are trying to maintain our current levels of programming and services. That's important to us. We don't want to decline. We don't want to give up programs. Everything we do is for a purpose for our students, whether it's our at-risk population, it's our special ed population. Every, every one of those programs helps support a specific population, whether it's gifted and talented and we're doing enrichment, we're doing world languages at the middle school, we have a self-contained classroom for our lower functioning kids, we're managing our autism population, we have our alt-ed program at the high school, we have gap. All of these programs have a purpose for all of our students and we want to try to maintain those programs because they provide a need for us and they provide a need for our community. We considered future needs in CIP and the impact on future budgets. Again, for the last couple of years, we've been putting things off and off and off. You'll see in the budget, we continue to put them off and off and off. That gets scary when you start looking at our buildings and trying to maintain our buildings and keep them viable and functional through the long term. You know, if we want to see our buildings 50 years from now still be in really good shape, we need to maintain them. We need to be proactive in that maintenance, not reactive. Right now, we're, we're starting to get into that phase of being a little more reactive than proactive and that's an area that we don't want to get to, where everything is getting fixed once it's broken. We want to be maintaining things to keep them viable. We looked at staffing increases only when required. We continue to look and explore different ways that we can repurpose staff, I guess you can say. How can we, we split people in half and have them do this and that and try to figure that out and kind of be real purposeful on our, on our, our programming and what we're doing with staff. What is good for our children? We want to make sure that what we're providing is the best educational programming that we can, we can, we can give them. We're also aligning our plans with our CINNIE, our DINNIE and our focus monitoring plan. As you know, we've talked a lot in the past about our response to intervention model. We obtained a new core reading program that we started this year. Those are all part of our CINNIE, DINNIE and focus monitoring plans, but they're also really good for kids. They're also helping us move our kids forward and the outcome of that will be better test scores. I always hate to go back to that, but that is what we're measured on, by the state and by the federal government, so. But, the overarching piece is that it will be good for kids. It will impact them. It's important to remember, education doesn't stop. If the budget is reduced, we reduce our effectiveness in meeting everyone's needs. It means more people are pulled in more directions. It means what we're able to provide is less and less and less and our resources are less. Sometimes the important thing to remember is that when we reduce our resources, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be cheaper because oftentimes it can cost us more. If we reduce services, let's give you an example for special education. We've just developed several new programs. We can say, well, let's cut those programs, but you know what? The three or four students in that program who then land in the classroom, who aren't meeting with success are now out of the district at 75 or $100,000 apiece. So, again, we need to think about what is really in the best interest of kids. We can't continue to cut and not think that we're going to affect that and in the long run could cost us more. So, we need to manage that and keep looking at that piece of it. You've seen these before, these are educational goals. Again, we want to make sure that our students are reading, writing and doing math. The fourth one is important, that all students who are participate in educational experiences beyond the core curriculum and the boundaries of a traditional classroom. I think you'll see in the article going in the paper this week that at the high school, it is not just a want, but it's an expectation that students participate in civic engagement activities, that they participate in student council and band and chorus and that they get involved. Research shows that the more students are involved, the higher their achievement will be. So, again, it's important that we continue to meet those needs and continue to look at that. Continuing to cut those programs really hurts the kids. You know, it hurts that population of students. It doesn't affect me if the ninth grader doesn't take band, but boy, that ninth grader who loves band and that's the thing that keeps them coming to school every day, it affects that child. And so, it is important to consider those pieces. In addition to those district goals, each school has goals. We also have staff have individual professional development plans that look at their individuals, what are things they want to improve on. We have our CINNIE plans, which are our school in need of improvement plans, our district in need of improvement plan, and then we have a focus monitoring plan that looks specifically at special education. So, all of those plans are really aligned around that whole concept of response to intervention. How do we get students when they're first starting to have troubles? How do we get to them? How do we make sure that they're being evaluated, they're getting the right instruction and we're keeping them on grade level? So, all of that kind of ties together. What is our current and projected population? As you can see, we're not going down. We're still educating lots of kids. Next year total, we're at a projected enrollment of about 3,037 students. I do want to point out at Glen Lake, you'll see that little dip from 176 last year to 158, back up to 180. The reason for that is because we have preschool there, which ours are three and four-year-olds. And often throughout the year, we get about a 25% increase in student population because we pick those students up at three, no matter when they turn three. So, throughout the year, we will gain 30 or 40 more students. So, usually we start the year off with low numbers in preschool and throughout the year we build those numbers. And so, that's how you, that's why you see that little dip at the beginning of the year. Maple Ave is looking to just increase slightly. Bartlett will be fairly stable with a little bit of an increase, but as you can see, this year was a significant increase from Bartlett, from 188 to 206. That's, for one year, for not expecting, it was huge. That was, we added that first grade classroom, I think, and David could correct me, but I think we had like seven or eight new first graders alone come into the building, so that was a fairly significant move. Mountain View is holding steady. High School's holding steady as well. So, some things to think about and remember is, we had the housing project going at Bartlett. There's also two more housing developments that are on the planning boards. I think one just went through, which was a 17 housing development and I believe there's another one on the other side of town that's like 24 houses that has gone through. So, again, just two other pieces to the puzzle to remember. If they bring in 10 or 15 students each across the district, we could do it. If you get a bubble in third grade, we're in trouble. Now, I'm going to show you a little bit of data just about where we are with class size, those kinds of things. So, students to teacher ratio, this is data provided to us by the Department of Education. These are based on October 1 of '09 data. That's the most current they have as of this moment. What this looks at is the student to teacher ratio. So, what this does is it takes into account every adult that's in the building. So librarians, parent educators, kitchen staff, so they take every adult and divide it by the number of students, so that it's kind of a student to teacher, kind of a staff to teacher ratio. So Gothstown comes out at about 14.0, which as you can see in comparative districts. These districts are either based on local districts that we compete directly with, such as John Stark or Manchester, as well as districts that are of comparable size. So when you see Merrimack Valley, Pembroke, La Conia, those are districts that are fairly similar in size to Gothstown, and also have fairly similar profiles. So those are good comparative districts when you look at that piece of the puzzle. The next is the class size. This is actually how many students are in your classes. Now we know this is fairly old data, because it is a year old, and we know right now that our class sizes are a little larger than this. We know, at least in grades three and four at Maple Ave are at 27, so that has gone up. But again, grades one and two, they break it down in three different ways. Grades one and two have an average class size of 20.3, the state average is 17.8. Grades three and four, the average class size is 21.5, state average is 19.3. And grades five through eight, that should be five through eight, not five and eight, is 24.5, and the state average is 19.8. So you can see, last year, our state, our class size was significantly larger than what the state average is. Just on the bottom, I have just the New Hampshire rules identify that in K to 2, you must have 25 or less students. In 3 to 5, it's 30 or less students with a, with a goal of achieving 25 or less. And grades 5 through 12, which must be 30 or less. And what are we projecting for next year? So this is, these are kind of numbers based on where we are right now, give or take that there's no students moving in. At Bartlett, we would have first, second, and third grade of class size of 18. That is, there is an additional teacher that David has requested for third grade, due to numbers and class size right now. If we did not have that teacher in third grade, that third teacher, we're starting at 25 for that class, which is fairly large. We have fourth grade looking at 25. At Maple Ave, we're looking at 20, 20, 23, and 25. And again, when you start to look at that 25 number, that gets a little, a little nervous to me, only because it takes a couple of kids, and the next thing you know, we're back where we are this year at 26 and 27. Unfortunately, in both buildings, we are pretty much out of space. If we got, Dave and I have chatted, if we, if we put another third grade teacher in that role, that puts us into, we would be losing the teachers' room library space. We would move the teacher into the current special ed room that we have four staff in. Those four staff would move over to the teachers' room slash teacher resource library room, and we'd find another closet to put the books in. So again, we have zero, zero space in our buildings. Mountain View, we're looking at 23, 24, 25, and 23 for class sizes for Mountain View next This is just an interesting numbers when we look at, what is our educational attainment of teachers? And when you look at, the percent of teachers with a bachelor's degree is 59.2, percent of teachers with a master's is 39.3, okay? It tells a couple of different stories. One is that we certainly hire younger teachers with less experience. One of the things we try to do is encourage teachers to continue their degrees and continue their professional development. One of the downsides of hiring younger teachers with less experience and less degrees is that it provide, they require more mentoring, they require more training. But on the positive note is, they're certainly a cheaper commodity when you look at them as, with just their bachelor's as opposed to their master's degree. Average teacher salaries, this is for the '09-10 school year, so again, it's for last year's data. Our average teacher salary in Gothstown is $45,680, significantly below the state average of 51,443. Again, one of the things that, as a superintendent, I continue to think about and need and worry about is, how competitive do we continue to stay? We need to be competitive. We have several districts surrounding us that are pretty high-paying districts. And I know when Bedford High School opened, we lost a lot of teachers to Bedford, because they could go across the town and make a significant amount of more money. So it is something that, as a superintendent, we need to be cautious of, and as a board, we need to think about those things, and because it is, who teaches our children? It's our teachers. We want to make sure we have stability, we want to make sure that we have well-trained teachers. We spend a lot of time and a lot of money in training our teachers, we want us to make sure that they stay, that, you know, that they're appreciated and that they stay here in Gothstown and support our students. Cost per pupil. State average for the '08-'09, they don't have the '09-'10 school year yet, state average was $11,745, Gothstown was $9,579, a difference of $2,166. We do a lot of good things for a little bit of money, and that $2,000 difference really shows that. Again, I've got those comparative districts, so you can see where they fall in that kind of sequence of, of budget dollars. These are districts over time that have, have lower cost per pupil than us. As you can see, we have, there's 162 school districts within the state. I think there's two, four, six, eight of them on the board that this year have lower cost per pupil than us. The two-star asterisk says that they were lower than us for two years in a row. One star means that they were just lower than us last year, and no stars mean this is a new year for them to be lower than us. But that's pretty significant when you look at our budget and say there's only eight school districts who have a lower cost per pupil than Gothstown.
Actually, Stacy, one of them only has an elementary school, and elementary schools are far less expensive to run than a high school, so that's maybe not really true.
Yeah, New Boston is definitely just elementary.
Perhaps you'll throw it in there. Because our elementary costs are actually below that of New Boston, if you look at our schools.
When you look at cost per pupil, now it's, it's difficult to compare when the state breaks it down for elementary, for middle, and high school. It's a hard comparison, because not every elementary school is a K to 4 or a 1 to 4. Everybody's got a little bit of a different range. But to give you a perspective of where we fall, when you compare our, our, our public elementary, middle, and high school rates, there's only 18 elementary schools that, that have a lower cost per pupil than us. There's only three middle schools and six high schools that have a lower cost per pupil. And so high school is about the only area, because pretty, it's fairly standard to have a 9 to 12 high school. Elementary and middle schools are a little bit different, but as you can see by the numbers, even with different comparatives, there's not a whole lot that are less expensive than us, in terms of cost, have those cost per pupils that are less. So who makes up our population? Who are all of those kids that we need to educate? These are just our free and reduced lunch numbers. They're from March of '09 and October of '09, again, the most recent data that I can get my hands on. As you can see, we've had some significant increases. Bartlett went from 24 to 31%. What does this tell me? This tells me that our population of students, the research will show you, that the free and reduced students typically come to school with more needs, more disabilities, more identification that need more supports. And so it's important to remember, not all of them. So it's something that we have to watch. It's, again, another area that we have to identify with. Our English language learners, those students who come to us not speaking English or needing English language services. Again, this is data from October of '09. At the time, we had 14 students who were identified or a .47 population. We currently this year have 26 students who need ESL services. Again, a growing need for our community. A year ago, we were at 14. I think your bigger cities, your Manchesters, your Concordes are getting full, and they're starting to look at outside communities. Where else can we place? I know Lutheran Social Services, a lot of those organizations who have, who place families, look for those outside, because they may get cheaper rent, they may get more services. And so we are seeing a growing population. We are required by law to provide services to those students. Those services can be anywhere from four hours a day to a half hour or a check-in a day. They're pretty significant.
What did you say, our current ESOL?
Is 26.
26.
Yeah. It's up in the red.
Oh, sorry.
Stacy, do you know if they're concentrated more in the elementary, middle school level or high school level?
I think they're fairly well-spread out.
Okay.
I mean, we have, we have one teacher and one parent educator that service those 26 students, if you remember. And I'll talk a little bit about budget cuts later, but we did cut a part-time parent educator last year, the year before, out of the budget for ESL services. Our preschool enrollment, currently, we have 56 preschoolers enrolled in preschool. And again, as I talked to you earlier, our three and four-year-olds will grow as the year goes on. Again, 56 students, those are 56 identified students that could be identified anywhere from having an articulation disorder where they need speech therapy, you can't understand what they're saying, to low-functioning autism, to multiple disabilities where it's a student who maybe doesn't talk, needs to be fed. You know, we, we as a public entity educate every student who walks through our door at three years old, so that is, it's a population that continues to grow. The autism population, we are not seeing less autistic students, that's for sure. We're certainly seeing an increase in them. And part of that has been developing programs to help meet their needs. Dropout rates, the state average is 1.7. Gothstown High School dropout rate for the '08-'09 school year was 1.6%. That doesn't seem like a lot. What that would mean would be about 15 or 20 students. The change in this is, from the time that this data was put into place, we have SVE-18, which requires that all students stay in, in school until they're 18 years old. What does that do? That requires us to develop programs. We have to now keep that kid who was ready to drop out at 16 or 17, not motivated, doesn't care about school, doesn't want to be here, we now have to educate him or her. So what does that mean to us? It means we need to keep those programs in place. It means we have to keep GAP, we have to keep ALDed. That's where we're capturing those students at, and what are those programs and services that we can provide to them to keep them in school to 18 and get them a high school diploma? Again, research will say, a high school diploma will help get a student out the door. It's important. Nowadays, you can't get a job without a high school diploma, it's near impossible. So that's just a starting piece. College is almost what your high school diploma used to be, you know, a college degree. So it's important that we meet these kids' needs. So 15 or 20 students a year, we're now picking up and trying to figure out what to do with them, providing programming, thinking outside of the box, what can we do? That takes resources, that takes staff. There's not extra bodies sitting around, everybody's picking up pieces. So our guidance staff here at the high school have now picked up 15 or 20 kids that they now have to figure out what to do with, because they're not traditional learners, they're not somebody who's going to sit in four, four blocks a day and take high school and be successful in it, but we still own them till they're 18, so it's another thing to think about. And special education. So we're required by law to educate them from 3 to 21 if they have special education needs. Here's our population. Glen Lake, obviously, 32% is a significant population. That's our preschool enrollment, because obviously, if they're there for preschool, they're special education. But again, these require specialized services, evaluations, time, commitment, training, the whole gamut. So again, special education can be anywhere from a student who has a simple learning disability, who struggles to read or write or do math, to a low-functioning student who we would educate till they're 21 and maintain here in our schools.
Stacy, free one, I do want to mention though, on the preschool at Glen Lake, we do have role model students there that do pay tuition to be there.
Correct.
So they're not all necessarily special needs.
Yeah, we have a...
So I didn't want you to say, oh, if a person says they're my child's enrolled in preschool, you know automatically they are, they're not necessarily true.
We have an integrated preschool program, and that provides for 50% typical students, so parents can apply. We do a lottery system if we don't, if we have too many, too many people who apply to the openings we have. They do pay a tuition rate for the students to attend the preschool program. And what that provides is some role model students for our special education students. So it doesn't help to have a classroom of speech and language students who don't speak very well, and I have a role model for them to model after, so that's one of the ways to do it. It is, it is recommended by the state that you have a 50-50 mix, so we do meet that requirement. And again, I want to remind everybody that we educate them all. Every student who walks through our doors, we're responsible for educating. So starting with first grade, we're responsible for educating those students who come in already reading, as well as those students who have not, not had any kindergarten. So it's, you know, teachers have to know the spectrum, they have to figure it out. It's a lot of effort, it's a lot of time. We have to educate those students who come to school ready to learn and those who, who don't. So the kid who doesn't come to school with breakfast, who doesn't have clean clothes, who isn't ready to learn, we have to figure out how to, when they walk in that door, we have to figure out how to make them learn. We have to educate students from intact families and students from broken families, you know? When you have families that, you know, get a divorce through the year, the kid's not emotionally there, they're not there, but yet, we're responsible for educating, we're responsible for giving them the kneecap and helping them to learn how to read and write and do math. All of these things, take training, take staff, take guidance counselors, we have to support them all. We have to educate those students who are gifted and those are struggling. We have to try to meet everybody's needs. So from the special ed population or the kid who just is in the classroom who isn't getting it at that moment in time, we need to figure that out, as well as the high end. You know, we have seventh and eighth graders doing algebra, we have world languages at our middle school, we have AP classes at our high school, you know? We have to provide that, you know, that whole spectrum of services for all of our students. We have to educate those kids who want to speak more than one language, as well as those kids who don't speak English, you know? So we've got kids at the middle school who want to take the language, we've got kids at the high school who would rather take something other than French or Spanish. We don't offer much more than that. We've got kids who don't speak English that we have to teach to learn English. And we go from the range of three years old to 21. So again, there's a lot that we're responsible for and a lot that we have to take into consideration. So when we look at all of that, how do we do, how do we do as a school district on our tech? I mean, the kneecap, which is the state assessment, is kind of the boil plate of, like, our standard, it's our gold standard at this moment in time that tells us where we are. So I have some, I have some GHS data, which is kind of interesting to look at. So these are our last year's kneecap scores. Gothstown High School did make AYP. One of the things people will often say, I've heard people say, "Well, the high school's doing great, but you know what? That middle school or the elementary schools, they're still not making AYP." Well, you know what? Kids don't get to 11th grade and know it that year. They've learned it. We just haven't figured out how to test them the right way. They don't get to at the beginning of 11th grade and all of a sudden, "Oh my gosh, I have all this information in me." They've learned it all the way through. We don't see these scores unless they've learned it. So where did we go? In reading, we landed ourselves at the 95th percentile last year in our reading scores. Hollis Brookline, Sunapee, Senior High School, and Hanover High School were the only three school districts that performed better than us. If you look at the next slide, what are their cost per pupil? Hollis Brookline is $10,400, Sunapee $16,000, Hanover High School $15,000, Gothstown High School $9,800. We're doing pretty well for a pretty low cost per pupil in comparative. Our writing scores, again, only three school districts performed better than us. Bedford, Hollis Brookline, and Co Brown, Northwood Academy, private academy. What's their cost per principal? Bedford's almost $12,000, Brookline $10,500, Co Brown $13,000. Again, Gothstown $9,800. Our kneecap math scores, we scored at the 92nd percentile. Six school districts performed better than us, we're a little lower this time. Hanover High School, Hollis Brookline, Bedford High School, Bowe High School, Oyster River, and Sunapee. These are not some bad schools to be in company with. They have pretty good reputations, they have pretty good standards. I'm pretty proud as superintendent to say that we scored as high, as high as them, and we're doing it for a lot less money. When you look at the comparative data for that, Hanover High School at $15,000, you saw Hollis, you saw Bedford, Bowe High School at $14,000, Oyster River at $15,000, Sunapee at $16,000, Gothstown High School at $9,800. So we are doing what we need to be doing, we are increasing our scores. I'm confident that our students are making progress and are meeting with success, and we're doing it for a relatively inexpensive cost. Annual income, this is actually an older slide. We haven't gotten the new, updated census information from the last census. I don't, I don't know how long it takes them to get that out, but I would imagine that will be out. But again, it just gives you an idea of your annual income in Gothstown, which is at about $61,000, which is a little higher than a lot of the local surrounding towns. What, what you'll see here is, these are the same, same towns that you saw on the other slides. What is broken up? Merrimack Valley is made up of multiple different towns, so that's where you see the Webster Salles, very loud in Bosco Inn. Those all make up the Merrimack Valley School District, so you'll see those broken out. Again, here's your 2009 tax rate. I don't have the current information, I know they've looked at setting it, but we haven't gotten the official words yet, so I've just gone up to 2009. For your local ed was 950, the total tax rate of $21.67. And what I did was, I went through historically to look at the past 10 years of tax rates. If you look at 2000, your tax rate was $28.43. Your 2009 tax rate was $21.67.
But you also remember there's been a reevaluation during that time.
There's been a reevaluation, absolutely, and so there are factors that play into that. The other piece of the reevaluation, I would say, was though, is that you also need to consider that likely your house appraisal went up. And so there certainly is a good thing about that. Your house is worth more if you wanted to sell it. But that does give you the actual tax rates. What makes an education? When I step back and I think about, when, when you think about your education, what do you think about? When you were a kid, what were you in school for? You thought about your teacher. You thought about someone who helped you. And you thought about when a good teacher helped you learn and you didn't know you were learning. Those are all things we can't take away from our students. Teachers are our asset. They are who teaches our kids. And when I show you, when we go into the current budget, you're going to see numbers. And staffing is the majority of our budget, and it should be. They are the teachers that are in front of the children, teaching our students to learn, to engage. They're helping them grow. And so it is important to always step back and remember that our teachers and staff are what makes our schools. So getting into, leaping over into where is our budget this year? These are just some general things where we budgeted. Health insurance, we budgeted at 17.25. We're anticipating hopefully having our GMR next week at some point in time, if not early the following week. So we may be able to budget a little bit more accurately once we have that number. Although from what I'm hearing, I'm not so sure that our GMR is going to be lower than that. I'm hearing some high numbers and it may actually come up higher than that.
GMR means what?
Guaranteed maximum rate. That's the highest percentage that we would have as an increase. What makes up that 17.25? The actual 10-year average is 15.24. And what we've done is we've been, it's been recommended to us to add between 1 and 4% for an increase for kind of administrative fees. And this is as part of kind of the new health insurance plan and the regulations that go along with them and fees that will be incurred for our health insurance companies to be able to manage that piece of it. So as you can see, we budgeted 2.01, made it a round number and got there with that number. Our current increase this year for health insurance was 15.5%. Dental insurance, we budgeted at 5% increase. Our current increase was 5.5%. Retirement, we did budget it at 30%. If you remember, two years ago, the state is supposed to pay 35%. Two years ago, they went down to 30%. Then last year, they went down to 25, or this year, they went down to 25%. They've promised to go back up to 35%. However, with all the budget cuts, I'm not guaranteed that. So we went a little conservative and budgeted 30%, giving us a little bit of flexibility on that. Teachers' rates went from 8.02% to 9.77%. And others, meaning support staff who are eligible, went from 9.16% to 11.09%.
And we should state, that wasn't a choice on our part. The state mandated that increase.
Correct. Right. We don't have a, these are, these are all numbers that come from the state, from the retirement system. Oil, we budgeted at 2.685. We're currently paying 2.385. We're hoping to maybe look at seeing if we can do some multi-year contracts with some of our providers to see if we can get a better rate. Electricity, PSNH recommended a 6% increase. Propane, we budgeted at 1.745. Our current price is 1.695. Salaries and benefits, our teacher contract expires in 2012, so that will be negotiated next year. Our support staff contract is currently in negotiations. And so any increase in support staff salaries, if you see them in the budget, it's only because it would have been a change in staff. There's no salary increases in the budget that will come as a warrant article, whatever that contractually comes out to be and whatever's negotiated. So what is our total budget? Our general fund budget, meaning your function 10, your 2010 budget was $34,376,161. That includes a $215,000 warrant article. So when you looked at your budget, it's a different number because we don't expect, the warrant articles aren't included in that. The proposed 2011 budget is 35,642,948. It's an overall increase of 1.481 million or 2.28%. So here's some additional breakouts because it also shows, I think, when you look at this, where the salary and benefit piece comes in and how significant of a part of the budget it is. So total salaries for 2010 were 16.48 million, 468 million. For 2011, those salaries are 17,978 with an increase of 1.5 million or 9.2%. Now, that does include within that budget, within those salary numbers for 2011, the new staffing request of one teacher at Bartlett for third grade, seven paraeducators that would be reimbursed by Dunbar under New Boston. Our para, we're not adding any new paraeducators for Goffstown, but because we have to budget for them, you'll see that on the revenue side, they'll reimburse us, but it is an increase in staffing. And Maple Lab has requested the two part-time secretaries to become a full-time secretary. And because of the current situation, it will actually save you money to do that. Put that little note in there. In the sal, in area of salaries, I just wanted to point out, because sometimes we forget these things as we go budget to budget year, some of the reductions we have made in staffing over time. In '09 and '10, for that budget year, we cut a half-time secretary, one administrator, two teachers and five paraeducators. Last year in the budget, we cut one and a half secretaries, one paraeducator and five and a, 5.9 teachers. And so those are not, some of them are part-time positions that we cut, but it does give you an idea of where we've cut. That's just staffing. That doesn't include any of the other items we've cut out of the budget, so. And the flip side of salaries is the benefits piece. In 2010, benefits were budgeted at 6.8 million. The 2011 budget has them at 8.7 million. It's an increase of $1.9 million. That's a significant amount. What that takes into account is the GMR that we budgeted, staff changing salaries, staff changing benefit packages. We've had a significant number of staff go for maybe single plan, a family plan, or take health insurance that might have not taken health insurance. So all of that plays into that piece of the puzzle.
As well as the increase from the state on percentages for retirement and everything?
Yeah, absolutely. And so out of the $35 million budget proposed, 27 million of it is just salary and benefits. That doesn't include any extra costs, the cost for oil, the cost for propane, the cost for heat arbo, you know, all of those cost busing contracts that aren't included. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of supplies, there's not a lot of materials in this budget. When you see it, what's in here is what we need to survive, is what's in there. And that number, 27 million out of 35, is staffing.
Quick question, please. So you're saying that our increased staffing cost is 1.9 million, but ultimately our budget posed to us is only going up by 1.48?
Correct. It shows that we cut...
So you're saying you made a half million, well, you made almost a half million dollars of cuts in other areas?
Correct. Yep. When you see the budget, there is not a lot in that budget. We've narrowed it down to what we could, what we think we could live with and sustain. We will not be moving forward. I'll be upfront with that. This is not a forward-moving budget. This is a sustaining budget and perhaps could slide us back for, particularly when I look at maintenance and what we've cut out of there. So just, but it was in order to get where I think we needed to be to present a responsible And just last, education is a community investment. It really is. It is something that as a community, we need to know that the education of our students is the most important thing we can do. I just, I have one article that I like to pass out that I came across that just is, it's from the National Association of Realtors, and it's directly from one of their toolkits for realtors. And it talks about public schools and the link between public schools and home valuations and the impact that it has, and how better schools provide better resources for home sales and home investment. So again, I want to kind of end this portion of the presentation with just, these are our kids in our community and we need to value them. We need to make sure that they get an education that you as a parent maybe got. That is important. We need to, we need to foster our kids. We only have them here for 12 years. It doesn't seem like a long time, but it, it seems like a long time, but it really isn't. When you look at 180 days a year, we have to do what we can for them when they're here. And that's a really important message. So I'm going to pass these out as well and then I'll move right into the zoo.
Stacy, can we actually make a copy of, put that on our website so the public can have access to that study as well?
I will, what I'll do is I'll make a copy. I'll put the PowerPoint presentation and this on the website. We'll create, we start to create another link for the budget stuff. So I'll put them up there so the public can access this data as well. And I think there's enough copies to send out. So now we're going to move into kind of the budget portion of this, a little more nitty-gritty, as I would say. And the first place we're going to start in your budget packet, just as a reminder in the, for those of you new to the process, the budget is broken down into six areas. Each school has an area and then the district has an area. 000 lines, so you'll see they all start with 10. 000 lines are the district level lines. And I'm going to probably get these all wrong. 101 is Bartlett Elementary School. 102 is Maple Avenue. 103 is Glen Lake. 204 is Mountain View. And 305 is the high school. So if you're ever lost and can't figure out where you are in the budget, just go back to those first numbers and at least it will tell you what school you're in. And it's broken down by object code. So all your 11 hundreds, for example, are your regular education lines. Your 12 hundreds are your special education. And then you'll go into your object codes, which are on the second line of each, and each one of those has a different function as well. And you'll kind of get it as you go along. So when we start to look at the district level lines or the 00 lines, I'm just going to kind of point out some of the highs and the lows and the changes in those budget lines. You'll see on page one, substitute salary lines, we level funded that. We have not increased it or decreased it. Rate did a three-year average. We're at about $210,000 we spend on average for substitutes throughout the year. Let's see, we did increase, you'll see at the 110127 line, there's $2,400 in there. That is the stipend for Gertrude for his travel. In the past, that has not been a budgeted line item. But again, as we've shrunk the budget, we've identified more of those places that aren't in the budget and have really tried to outline specifically what is in there and what do we spend our money on? Page two, so page one is really your technology people, Gary and San Murray, your district level people. Page two and three are your benefits for those positions. Bottom of page three, you'll see your, there's a $30,000 line for teacher tuition. That's as part of the GEA contract that we budget $30,000. That's for teachers for professional development work. If anybody has questions as they go through, just ask.
We knew these would have an easier time if you could maybe identify it by the line?
Okay. Yep. So that would be if you look down, what I was just talking about, the 110241. It's kind of towards the bottom of page three. You'll see a $30,000 line item. Oh, go, go, yep. Flip over to the first section. See where that is. So if you go to page four, we had a slight increase in the 110321 line. Those are services that we are required to provide to students who are in the hospital or receiving services. If they're put in, no matter who they are, if they're in the hospital or the state hospital, we're required to pay their assigned tuition rate for that student whenever they're in the hospital. So there's been, just based on use, we've increased that budget line. 110341 was technical staff professional development. We've decreased that line item. We budgeted for the number of staff times $150, which is what the teachers get for their professional development. So that aligns more closely with that agreement, although they're not in the agreement. Page, page five is pretty much level funded or some just slight reductions based on use. Page seven, page six is just a summary. Page seven is special education. You're going to see an increase in that line. That is where we have the two new teachers at Bartlett that are our two new program teachers. If you remember last year, we, we hired those teachers out of ARA funds. The advantage of doing that was we were able to hire them, keep kids in district so that we had the money upfront to pay for them, kept these students in district. We now obviously then pick up the cost of the teachers, but what we don't have on the flip side of that is the cost for the added district placement for those students. And so we hire teachers in two of those programs. One program has four students in it, one has three. And so if you had to think about putting six or seven students out of district, you're talking $700,000 or $800,000 in tuition. And so the increase in staffing far out is less than what it would cost us to place those students out of district. So again, another benefit, one of the benefits of ARA was that it allowed us to kind of move forward with those programs and get them, get them into place. Page eight to nine are the benefit and kind of associated increases with those piece of the puzzle. Page nine, you'll see an increase in the tutorial services. Again, these are special education students who would be home or hospitalized. So if we had a special ed student who was having significant emotional difficulties and couldn't come to school, we might have to provide tutoring. We might have to provide some services for that student. And so that line would cover us and help us pay for those costs. And again, that's based on historical use. The special ed elementary, the 339 is our consultant line. That has increased mostly just based on use and based on students we have in the district who need specialized services or specialized consulting. Again, we put them out of district and it cost us four times the amount than maybe $10,000 to have a consultant come in and work with us. So instead of paying $75,000 in tuition, that student might maintain in the district, but we might have, we might need somebody to come in and help work with us to make sure we're meeting that student's needs. And say a student's really behavioral, we might need a specialized person to come in and give us ideas and do evaluations and assessments on those students to make sure we're meeting all of their needs. So that is a slight increase. Page 10, again, you'll see a slight increase in elementary tuition. This was a changeover from where we had those, where we had the public tuition summary, the student lines was in a different line. It was under the district tuition line. So you'll also see the, so the 561 line had a slight increase because we moved those budgets. They were in the 564 line. So you'll see a decrease in, so they're kind of one up, one above and below the other. So you'll see a decrease in that. The other piece of the puzzle on the 564 line was a fairly significant, it was almost $500,000 decrease, was again, we're not placing students out of district because we've been able to develop programs within the district. And we continue to do that. We continue to expand those programs, get staff training so that we can ensure these students can stay within the district. So page 11, we have a slight increase in travel for a district-wide personnel. Again, that's just in general, people who are travel. You know, as we've hired several people who cover district-wide positions, so they may, like our, we have a, the EH program, the emotionally handicapped program at the elementary school. Sue, if you, I think you're, if you go, skip over that first section and go to the detailed budget and you'll be understanding where I'm at. I can see you trying to figure that one out. Yep. Skip over that whole first packet.
Now you told me.
Yep. Now go to page 11.
Hey. Makes sense now.
Yep. So as we, so for example, we have a counselor who works at the elementary school part-time in that program. She also consults with the middle school. Again, trying to make sure our programs are consistent so that if, if we have a program for our behavioral students at the elementary school and one at the middle school, that it's a consistent structure, that what's happening in one building is happening in the other. So students make a smoother transition from building to building. Programs are similar and we meet students' needs. So there's a slight increase there. Page 12 is our ESL teacher, our English language teacher and the paraeducator. That hasn't changed. That's been fairly stable. So what you'll see therefore on page 12 and 13 are just the benefits associated with those positions. Page 14 is our athletic director salary, Steve Fountain. And again, that's consistent and his benefits are associated with that on page 14 and 15. Page 16 is our summer success program. That's our summer program for our regular education students. Our special students are in that added district tuition line. This is our, our, our kind of at-risk population that we provide for weeks of summer programming to. Again, we did data last year that showed that it certainly helps engage students. Again, we did data last year that showed that it certainly helps engage students, it keeps them engaged, and we see slight increases in their performance. But what we don't see in the beginning of the year is the lack, the lag, you know, students maintain over the summer. And so we found particularly at the elementary school, that's a significant benefit for those students who are at risk. We keep them from, you know, kind of losing ground over the summer and they're ready to go in September. So again, that's another important component of something we provide. The rest of that page is all summer program salaries and benefits. Page eighteen is our guidance, this is actually that part-time guidance counselor that I was talking about. That works in our EH program at the elementary school, that also covers the middle school and does some work at Maple Lab. So she's a, more of a district-wide, so she's found in the district level. And so her salary and benefits are included here. In the middle of page nineteen, you'll see the, the cost for the NWEA testing, there's a slight decrease in that cost. Page twenty, you'll see again a decrease in that line item. All we're budgeting in there is our consulting services for our nurses at Dartmouth Hitchcock, that's a requirement of having a school nurse, is that they have consulting services. That should there be a case that they need help on, they have a resource or a doctor, a physician that they're linked up with to get the answers and get the support they need. Page twenty one, we've looked at a reduction in our professional development line. As you see, it was two years ago ninety nine thousand, this year it's, this year it's budgeted at seventy one five. Next year, we budgeted at twenty five thousand. Again, not that we're doing less professional development, but we're going to try to use our grants aggressively and hope that our grants stay the same funding. Again, this is one of those areas that we reduced. The cost benefit is we hope that our grants maintain where they're at. We believe we can support ourselves if our grants stay the same, at the same dollar levels. If we start to see reductions in our grants, we're going to see a slack in where we're going to be able to meet professional development needs and have to get a little more creative. But that was a pretty significant cut that we made in those lines.
Does that align to the contracts?
No, no, that would be professional staff development that we believe, such as like we did the reading streets training, continuing that, any kind of those trainings, it's not individual professional development. Yep, it's things we need to do training on with teachers. So that's page twenty one. Page twenty two is our technology staff. Those are our kind of technicians, we have four people under that line item. So what you'll see on page twenty two and twenty three are their salary and benefits. One of the small increases you'll see in there is a six thousand dollars for summer work for them. In the past, we haven't had technicians here in the summertime. And one of the things we have with lots of wires and lots of things going on in our buildings is we find in the summer, we're not always ready to go in September because we lack the staff and the resources to make sure everything's up and running in the summertime. So Gary asked to budget a couple of dollars in there to be able to bring some staff in in the summertime and make sure things are ready. If we need to buy new servers, that they're hooked up, they're ready to go. And particularly now that our phones, everything's kind of all intertwined and connected, it's making sure that everything's up and running and working.
Can you have the two dollars?
Yep. So twenty two and twenty three pretty much cover that. Twenty five is your school board information, all of your school boards. We did reduce on page twenty six your, page twenty seven, your general supplies, we reduced it by a thousand dollars. That's just based on historical use. We've gotten really good at the barbecue and what our needs are and what our expenses are, and so with that, we've been able to get a more accurate count on what we actually need. So we did reduce that based on kind of historical spending.
I want to mention for the public watching, that's the senior barbecue, the barbecue we do for graduation for them.
Page twenty eight is your treasurer, and twenty nine is the other half of the, the cost we have associated with the treasurer, those are all level funded. Page thirty is your election services, again, level funded. Things we have to pay for, for the district elections. Page thirty two is your audit services, that's been a slight increase. We're up for a new contract, so we're going to go out to bid for auditors. And because the state always recommends every five years to go out to bid and seek other auditors, just to get other comparative data, make sure you are on target. We also, with our ARA funds and all the additional federal programs we have, there's been an increase in audit requirements. And so we're anticipating an additional cost to manage all of that. Page thirty three is your legal expenses for regular education, again, we level funded that line. Thirty four is your SAU assessment. That has had a twenty seven thousand dollar reduction. That's based on the budget that was presented to the SAU board. We have another meeting coming up, so that could fluctuate or change. But that was a twenty seven thousand dollar reduction based on reductions in building maintenance and things that we're anticipating needing in the SAU, as well as some reductions of staff at the SAU level. Page thirty five is your admin salary pool, that's in there at a two percent. So it is a reduction of five thousand dollars over this year, the benefits that are, go along with that. That goes on to the next page, and page thirty seven. Page thirty eight is your facilities director, that's Jerry Aggett, the facilities director position. We have increased district-wide temporary help, that is a line that we have always traditionally overspent. We have, when a custodian is out, we have to bring somebody in. You know, if we have three custodians working at night here at high school because we have eighteen activities, you can't just have two, it doesn't work. We have stuff to, maintenance needs during the day don't change, at night don't change. It's just like a teacher, we still need a teacher in the classroom, we still need a custodian to help clean the cafeteria. So that line covers those. It also covers some additional support in the summertime when traditionally a lot of custodians want to take vacation, so they may take a week or two off. So we bring in some temporary help to help us out, to clean lockers, to do all of the maintenance that gets done in the summertime, comes from that line item. You'll see the associated benefits that go with that. On page thirty nine and forty, you'll see an increase on page forty on the twenty six twenty four thirty two line for district-wide emergency repairs. What we did was we just moved another line item that you'll see in a minute, it has a decrease. Because we thought emergency repairs, that will be, when you see the, the budgets, you'll see there's not a lot of maintenance requests, there's not a lot of maintenance in there. So we thought it was prudent of us to put some money in there, should a boiler break, should something go. We know at the high school here, we just had a hot water heater go, so we had to fund that. And so kind of those emergency situations that come up that typically are never cheap to fix. So facilities covers the rest of that page. Page forty two is where you'll see that decrease, underground maintenance. This year, we had fifteen thousand dollar budget, we cut it down to zero. We put some seal coating in two of our schools for our, our parking lots. Again, another maintenance item, the preventative care, which is to seal coat them, will keep them much longer. If we, if we don't seal coat them, we're likely to start losing payment on the end, and so we're recommending, we're trying to get into a cycle of two buildings this year, maybe two buildings next year, and put them into a cycle. Right now, we're not doing them at all, so.
Currently, there's nothing in next year's budget for the cycle.
No, what we did was we put them within the buildings.
Okay.
So I believe we picked Maple Lab and the middle school were the two schools that we chose that needed them the most. So you'll see those within the budget. So we zeroed out that line and put them in the schools and in the emergency lines. Vehicle gasoline went up a little bit, just based on usage and current cost of gas. I anticipate many new vehicles.
That's for our truck.
Correct. Page forty four is student transportation. That's just, just about level funded, it's based on our usage as well as our new contract. It does have late buses back in there. As you know, we cut late buses out this year due to the budget cuts, and so we are proposing bringing them back.
How much was the late bus, uh, bus saved that's this year?
Twenty three nine twenty two isn't budgeted for next year, it's about twenty four thousand.
Okay.
Have you had a lot of requests for it?
Surprisingly, no.
Obviously, there's just a little grumbling at the beginning of the year, and I haven't heard anything since then.
There may be more as the winter.
As winter comes on and it's a little more difficult to pick up kids, and it's not as nice to walk home anymore. Page forty five is special education transportation. And again, you'll see a significant decrease in that line. Again, that was our, our really strong contract that we got with the bus company with fairly competitive prices for both our aides and our buses. So that helped save some, some costs there.
And that's with the contract with the new company this year as well.
Right, it's with a new company. Page forty six is our non-teacher tuition, that is part of the GESS agreement. That's currently budgeted at ninety, nine thousand, the contract is ninety five hundred, so we did budget that in. Then forty seven and forty eight is our.
Stacy.
Yes.
Why an increase?
That was in the contract.
It was in the contract.
Contract required, required increases over the, over the four years for the amount of money that was being put in for training.
That's the contract we're negotiating.
Yes.
Right, but this year.
This year was supposed to be ninety five hundred.
And last year it was nine thousand.
Yep. This year was supposed to be ninety five, so I budgeted ninety five.
Well, this year is ninety five.
We under budgeted this year.
And no grievance?
No, because we would find the money, I mean, they still are eligible for ninety five hundred dollars. We just only budgeted nine thousand, so I budgeted ninety five, figuring that was the current contract. And then page forty seven is your bond principal and interest, and forty eight is your bond interest, or your bond, your bond payment, and forty nine, forty eight is your bond principal. You can entertain any questions from the district lines. And certainly you'll have plenty of time to look at them on Monday and Wednesday.
Which bond is this?
That's the middle of high school.
Why is it in the district budget?
It's the middle and Maple Avenue. This is the last payment of principal and interest.
I know, but I still don't understand why.
Because it's divided between two schools, that's why you, I think you put it in the district line.
Yeah, they've always been in the district line, that one has always been in the district line.
Always in the district.
Wow.
I go back further than you do.
Yeah, well, okay, let me say, in the last three years, they've been in the district line.
How much work would it be to divide it up and put it under the school?
No, it's, it's the last year, don't.
It's a single bond, it's the last payment.
Okay, well, the next budget that we're looking at, just keeping sequential, would be Bartlett. So David, would you like to come up and have a seat and you can present your budget? Again, I've asked them to kind of walk through what they do as a school and kind of some, highlight some of the increases and decreases.
All right, David's in the hot seat.
And don't worry, we have a buzzer when you go to your twenty minutes max.
Twenty minutes?
I'm not going to be twenty minutes.
Good evening. Going through the budget, there's not a lot of significant changes in Bartlett's budget for next year. We don't have any new programs or any new initiatives that we're starting at Bartlett. But as Stacy said, over the last couple of years, there's been some increase in the population at, at the school. I went back and looked from the time the Glen Lake opened up and we lost our preschool and our enrollment. And in the year two thousand and seven, we opened school with a hundred and seventy eight students, and two thousand and eight, it went to a hundred and seventy six. Last year went to a hundred and ninety one, and this year we opened with two hundred and six students. So over the last two years, we had thirty more students coming to Bartlett. Our enrollment for next year, Stacy said, is two hundred and thirteen. That's looking at our population now in a four percent raise of our students. Because of that increase, we're looking at one additional classroom teacher for our third grade. We currently have two second grade, three second grade classrooms and two third, so we'd like to ask for another third grade teacher. Our projected enrollment actually for third grade next year would be fifty four, so we're looking at, if we had two classrooms, it'd be twenty seven students in each classroom instead of eighteen if we had the three. So based on suggestions for academics, and I think the best thing to do is to have the classrooms with eighteen instead of twenty seven for the.
Just, excuse me, but in your classrooms are significantly smaller than the nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, the classrooms in the.
So you couldn't put twenty, um.
Well, the classrooms in the back wing, nineteen twenty two building.
Somebody could report you if you put twenty seven in some of those classes.
I think they're about six hundred and eighty square feet around that.
Yeah, I think the biggest one in the building is seven hundred fifty.
Which is the third under the requirement of the state now.
Yeah.
The new wing.
The new wing, nineteen sixty something.
They are smaller structurally, classrooms in the back wing.
State mandates probably, yeah.
Thirty square feet per student.
Yep.
And also, it's a different population too, I know Stacy went over the socioeconomic status. We have about a third of our students are low income. We have a good-sized population of special needs students at our school too. Going through the budget itself, we don't have, I looked at what we had for significant increases or decreases, and we thought significant would be about a hundred dollars at Bartlett. So I was just kind of looking through it, and I, there aren't a lot of things to discuss on, things that are different for next year. Supply lines, which is, the six eleven lines, which started on page fifty one, if they're number the same way.
Nope, we're not.
Never are.
Okay, on the.
Yeah, they are.
Oh, there we go.
And generally, the supply for like art, music, PE, there's only small increases in those, and that's due to the increase in enrollment. For example, for art, we budget three dollars and fifty cents per student. It says health class, but it's actually our PE class, it's a dollar fifty per student. In music, we budget a dollar per student. So it went from a hundred and ninety one to, you know, two hundred and thirteen for our music. And general supplies, we also budget forty dollars per student, and that's for, you know, the day-to-day supplies in the building. Looking at our eleven hundred oh five six one one, which is our language arts general supply, and the math general supply, which is eleven hundred eleven six eleven. And our books, which are eighteen six forty one. There was a little bit of shifting around, and I know Stacy talked to, this year we have the reading streets program, which was grant-funded. Before, we had sit and spelling, and we had different writing programs, and so next year, we're looking at budgeting for the reading streets program. We have, so that's in the language arts line. The math line are more just the consumables that we use for the everyday math program, the workbooks and the home link programs. And then the books and printed material are mostly the reading streets notebooks that are kind of consumable. So there was some shuffling around, we used to have, the math consumables were also in the books, but we moved that up into the math line. So I looked at the language arts general supplies, the math general supplies, and the books and printed material, and basically, that's our language arts and math program. And there's a difference of even, because it was grant-funded this year, there's only two thousand three dollars difference in all those lines. Also, the language arts supplies, instead of just the reading streets, we also budget for the writing journals for the students, it's part of the program. They have handwriting paper for them to do their writing, and also chart paper for the teachers to help instruct the history program.
Can I just, one quick question, the consumables for everyday math, those simply have been moved elsewhere?
Uh, yes, they used to be on the books and printed materials, eighteen six forty one, and they were moved to the math supplies, which is the eleven six eleven. Another increase that we're looking at is the eleven hundred eighteen seven thirty nine, which is other equipment. And we budgeted for an FM system for our classroom. Every classroom has FM surround system. We started a few years ago ordering, I guess it was one initially, and it was a surround sound system for the classroom where the teacher wears a microphone. And we got it because of, we heard it was good for special needs students. And we found it was good for every student in the classroom, it was also good for the teacher because instead of raising their voice to talk, they could use their normal conversation voice, so by the end of the day, they weren't hoarse. So every year, we budgeted a couple of them, so every classroom now has a surround sound system. And so if we're getting another classroom, I put in the budget for an FM system, so that classroom would have one too. And that's raises that line by twenty one fifty. Another change, it's actually down next year by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is the eleven hundred eighteen six fifty one line, the software. And instead of ordering a different software, we're just staying with the everyday math online resources, which has been a valuable asset at Bartlett. In the special ed line, starting on page fifty six, and the general supplies, this, next year, we're budgeting one thousand four hundred dollars, which is down three hundred dollars. And those are just general supplies for our special ed rooms. At Bartlett, we have the regular resource-type special ed program, it includes OT materials, speech materials. And we also have the two programs for the Goss Town Elementary School's LEAD program, which is more of a development-in-delay autistic program, and the success program, which is the emotional and behavioral program. Lot of those started up with grant funding, so we got a lot of supplies through the grant when we started the program. And so looking at the supplies, it's actually down next year. Twelve hundred eighteen six twelve, which is our test line for special ed, is down by nine hundred and seventy five dollars, because this year, we had to order two new tests that were revised, that we use, the test of written language and the Wyatt. So there were two major test purchases for this year that we not, don't have to do for next year. Also, in the special ed line on page fifty seven is the twelve hundred eighteen six fifty one, a software line. We would like to increase that by six hundred dollars to get the N-MOT program for the LEAD program. It's software, N-MOT software? It's kind of a phonetic literacy, it's more of a literacy. It's kind of a phonetic literacy, it's more of a literacy type program that's based on the computer. It's an excellent program. And then also down a couple of lines at the 739 on other equipment is a touchscreen for 300 dollars to run the program for that LEAD program. Also on page 57, skipped up a little bit, I think, is the 18733 line for furniture. And we budgeted 500 dollars for a student coming in next year who may need a special chair with a tray to work with a student. Going to page 61, the 14901859 for other services is 1,600 dollars. It's for assemblies. Generally, we've had that 1,600 dollars in our budget. This year it was cut and we just put it back in the budget for next year. And that's just to have assemblies in the school to supplement the curriculum. The next major change is on page 67, health supplies. It's for the nurse's office and it's down 450 dollars because she got her scale this year. So she said she doesn't need any new equipment. She's got her new scale, so, which she loves.
How much money for that scale?
It was in our budget for this year.
It's in our budget this year?
Okay.
Do you remember that?
No, I actually did not remember that we had a scale in this year's budget, so that's why I had to ask. So she got a scale. So she doesn't need any new equipment next year.
So she's going to be happy for 10 years or till retirement?
Oh, Philip had a question, sorry. It's not a question. Under the 1,200 lines. Your overview is terrific. But if you look at the 1,200 lines, the total increase is 38,000 dollars. I just think it's worth noting that those are salary and benefits things. And I think we're probably going to continue to see that. And so to the extent that categories change, it's useful to know because we're hearing about phenomenal changes up and down. So either, either we want to go back and talk about it or it can be talked about as we go through it.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I think for every teacher line, not our educator, but teacher line, you will see salary and benefit increases throughout the budget. That's the one point, the 3 million dollars will absolutely be spread throughout the budget in each building.
I'm sorry, David, 67, right?
Actually, the next change is on page 70, the media. Under 222218651, software, there was an increase of 725 dollars. And those are to renew subscriptions and programs that we currently have. For example, the World Book Online Program, the United Streaming, which teachers at Bartlett use a lot. Instead of using a two hour video, they find five minute snapshots of things that supplement the curriculum. And the atomic learning, which is actually for teachers and parents and anybody on instruction, I guess, on different, anything that you could think of that has to do with technology or programs. It's a how to do it type of program.
For those watching or here, if you remember, we cut atomic learning was one of the budget items we cut out of this year's budget. So some of that increase is putting that back in.
Under 222218735, replacement equipment. It went from zero to 700 and, I mean, 275 dollars. And that's to get a new listening center for the classroom, which is like a, you know, CD player, cassette player with a headphone systems for learning centers. In administration line on page 73, the 241000531, the only change on that is actually a decrease of 1188. And that's for voice communication. And as for phone charges and maintenance, we have our new phone system. So that's gone down by over 1,100 dollars. And on page 75, it's 249018811, other support services is to reinstate field trips, which was cut from the budget from last year. The line wasn't totally cut. What we do for Maple Avenue at Bartlett do the same admissions, it's for admissions for field trips. And we take the number of students, budget for two field trips a year at $2 a field trip. And it's more to just help with the admissions into the field trips. It wasn't cut totally because we left some money for in case some students couldn't make it that, yeah. So we weren't saying that people couldn't make it because they couldn't afford admissions. But we reinstated the field trip line. Under maintenance, starting on page 77, building repairs. It's up by 3,500 dollars and that's to refinish the hardwood floors in the back wing. Two, well, there's four classrooms that have hardwood floors. Two years ago, two of them would be done. And then we, we're going to do the other two floors last year, but that was cut from the budget. So we put it back in the budget for this year. So all the floors would be done. A natural gas line based on, it's for heating and for the kitchen stove. On page 78, this is 00621, it's actually down 17,450 dollars.
Wow.
On page 79, new furniture. We want to order six new bookshelves for some of the classrooms. It's for the new literacy program. But there's enough shelves and some of them are getting pretty old, the bookshelves that we've got. So for the new literacy program and just replace some bookshelves. On page 79, the 262000735, replacement equipment. It's down by 830 dollars and there's 300 dollars in there for tool replacement. And also on page 79, 262000737, replacement furniture is actually down 3,600 dollars. So there's no other furniture being purchased for next year. And the last thing I have is on page 82, 27250051, is transportation for field trips. And most of that was cut last year. We have some supplemental field trips that was left in. But generally for field trips, we have 2,000 dollars, 500 dollars per grade. The 500 dollars that was left in is also for supplemental trips like for music classes or strings. And sometimes smaller groups go to the high school or to, smaller groups could go to the middle school. So that transportation line was left in there. So it's a total of 2,500 dollars, which is 2,000 dollars more than this year. And that's all I have.
Any questions for David?
How important is the field trip money and busing to you as a school? How important is the field trip money and the busing? Because it was put back in the budget from last year and it made, made it through Stacy's cut. So I assume you must have had a passionate plea for it?
It's, field trips are important. I think they supplement the curriculum. And also I think for the population of Bartlett, it provides some experiences they might not have in other ways. And I think financially, a lot of the families need that support of going to field trips. And it's, if it's an educational part of the school day, then we should try our best to fund it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing it total, bottom line for Bartlett.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, it's kind of hard to decide.
You're right.
So I can't, you know.
Great, is that how you're presenting us from getting upset?
If you go back to the start of your books, you're going to see summary packages and, you know.
I'll have the total.
I don't want to flip these pages.
Yeah, you have to go back because they're all that way.
So Bartlett's total, Bartlett's total on this, this year, or next year I should say, is 2,45,993 dollars.
What's it this year?
1,852,970 dollars.
Sorry I asked.
So it's about a 200,000 dollar increase.
Yeah, salary and benefits.
Yeah, I know.
And that's additional one staff member. The rest is all contractual obligations, like, so.
Next on the list is Maple Ave. We'll invite Suzanne to come on up.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Hello. Okay, I promised not to give you a paper cut, but I'm going to, I'll try to move quickly, but stop me if we need to. Let's see, so if we could start on page 84 in our books. We'll see a number of places where we're level funded. The laptop lease, that is the same as last year. If you go to page 85, our art supplies and.
Numbers, 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 numbers.
Okay, sorry, 1,10611.
611, I got it, I'm fine.
Art supplies are down. Because we take the total population and multiply it by this, in this case, 3.50 cents. That is why there's a decrease. The same with physical education. That one is a decrease. There is an increase in our math general supplies. We have, well, I think there's a combination of things here. One is the cost of the, the consumables have gone up a bit. And the number of students in our upper grades, we have 135 for third grade and 126 for fourth projected for next year. And those books are a little more expensive, so there's part of that increase. And then music, that's 1,10611, that's a decrease. And science supplies, also we decreased in, last year we'd asked for 75 dollars for each classroom. This year we dropped it to 50 dollars for each classroom. So there's a decrease in ordering science materials.
What allowed for the decrease? Was it just a decrease in population or?
The, the science, we changed it. We were asking for the 23 classrooms at 75 dollars each classroom. And this year we dropped it to 50 dollars. So each teacher can spend 50 dollars on science supplies for the year. And then our.
I'm sorry, I missed a question. Do you historically have been spending the full 75?
Because we don't have that right in front of us right at the moment, so.
Yeah. I think, I think right now, when I, we have a closet in our school that we have science supplies. What we did was we pooled them. We're trying to be more efficient with what we have. So we asked teachers to pool supplies. And so we now have a closet that teachers can go and you, and sign out microscopes. There's all kinds of packages of dirt and rocks and things for erosion units, that sort of thing. So we're trying to, instead of having 23 classrooms with everything, we're trying to pool some of that. So we're able to save some by doing those kinds of things. So 75, they, they probably could have spent it if I asked them to. They can always do that. But I think we'll survive with 50.
Do you have a question, Philip?
I think you covered it, thanks.
If you go to 1,10641, Reading Street, the readers and writers notebooks, which is not something we've purchased in the past, but it's supporting our Reading Street program. It's 700, or 7.50 cents per student. So that, that line is going to be an increase from what it currently is 7,500 to 12,980. So that accounts for that increase there. In addition to ordering a few more of the student anthologies, they're 42 and 45 dollars a piece. So that's, again, Reading Street materials.
Reading Streets is rolling on next year for the first time, right? It was on this year.
It started this year, yes, correctly. But we were able to purchase all of the materials to start us off with, through our funds. But these are the supplemental pieces that we'll need to purchase, the workbooks, the kind of the consumable pieces.
The software, 1,10651 is level funded. 1,10731, it, the, there's a decrease in this line from, you know, 5,900 to 1,500. That's, we're basically just asking for a replacement firewall and that's it for.
So you're saying that you can get on eBay from Monk or from Maple Avenue?
No, not yet. 1,10735, we're asking, that's an increase in that line this year. We don't have anything in it. But the bulb, this is AV supply equipment, our LCD projectors, bulb replacements, that sort of thing for 500 dollars. So that's the end of 1,100.
How many projectors do you have, you think, approximately?
How many do we have, approximately? We have one in every classroom to support the reading program. That, there's lots of, not just online pieces, but pieces that the teachers use that require technology.
And one of the things we did last year with, again, with some our funds that we were able to access was we made sure that every, up to sixth grade, because of Reading Streets, has a lot of the technology pieces built in that every classroom has, approximately.
So in the 1,200, if we could, this is all salary on the first couple of pages, go to page 90. Our, this 1,200, everything in here, on my, my pages are blue, that means level funded. So our, for instance, 1,20431, that's maintenance contract, that's level funded. If you go on to the next page, 91, specialized postage, our general supplies, our testing, books and printed material and non-capital software are all level funded. So we're not asking for any more and we weren't really asking for too much to begin with. These are pretty, you know, a couple hundred dollars in each line. And there's an actual decrease on page 92 with 1,200, 731, new equipment, special education. We're, we've got a 450 increase from last year. Okay, so if we want to move on, let's see, to 2,100. Page 95. We do have increase in guidance, general supplies. This, I think is due because our numbers, it's the same, but I think we had a decrease in our current budget. It was just money cut out of it. So we're, this is still using the same math, adding the number of students times three, or 2.50 cents each. So it looks like an increase, but I think it was, it's because it, there was just money taken out of it.
It's something we cut out of the budget.
And the same with testing. This is actually, the testing increase has to do with, again, our Reading Street. Our literacy assessments, the baselines, the unit and end of the year tests for Reading Street are that increase of 6,000 dollars. So that line went from 600 to 6,800 for literacy assessments that go along with Reading Street program. And again, we have those this year, but that was, those were purchased through the, the our funds. And if you go to page 96, we, our power school annual maintenance is down just a bit. Per student cost, again, that's because of the number of students. It's always been 5 dollars per student and multiply that by the number of children we have. Okay, we could go to page 98. This is 2130, 431, health maintenance. We didn't have a lot in there, but this year she's just asking for some batteries for handheld equipment for 20 dollars. So that's a decrease. The printing, binding and her general supplies are level funded this year. Those are the other two on that, 551 and 611. I didn't have anything else to speak to in that section unless someone has a question. And I didn't have anything else to speak to in that section unless someone has a question. We'll go on to twenty-two hundred. Twenty-two, twelve, six forty-one, that's curriculum, books and printed materials, that's level funded. The professional materials to enhance staff development. And if we go to page one hundred and four. Again, we have, um, twenty-two, twenty-two, four thirty-two, that's, um, repairs, that's level funded. That's, um, repairing broken equipment, um, A V equipment and the, um, our library. And on page one hundred and five, again, these lines, um, six-eleven, six forty-one are level funded. And there's an increase in our, um, twenty-two, twenty-two, six fifty-one. And that's because we've added our portion of the district estimated cost per student for online subscriptions. That's new to this line for us. Um, we, what they did was just basically take the district, district cost and divide it amongst the school. So, we're paying three hundred and fifty dollars, that's the increase in that line.
And that was, that was a fee that the State Library Association used to pay for through a grant. That grant was not funded. So, again, that's another dollar amount that filters back to the school district. Um, and the, the State Libraries Association is actually going to purchase the subscription, so it comes at significant, I think it was about seven or eight thousand dollars for the district to do it on its own. I believe it was like fifteen or two thousand dollars altogether for us to do it through the Associate Library Association. So, it's still a significantly reduced cost, but again, it was always something we've gotten for free, but with funding was cut, so...
On page one hundred and six, um, in our media area, the, um, seven thirty-one, we are asking for two additional digital cameras with carrying cases and memory cards. They are in high demand at our school with, um, twenty-three classrooms. Uh, we, we don't have many, I, not in the double digits, that's for sure. We're under ten now, so we're just asking for a couple at three hundred dollars. So, that would be an increase to that line, which was zero. The next, the twenty-two, twenty-two, seven thirty-five is actually a decrease. And what we're looking to do is, um, order what they call a jack box or jack boxes. They can be used with laptops to create listening centers. So, instead of buying the tape players, we're looking to use what we already have, our laptops in the classrooms with our mobile cards, and just plugging in these jack boxes, um, and they're an inexpensive alternative to C D players. So, that's a decrease, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars for ten of these, um, connections. And then, once again, the, um, library, we're asking for replacement shelving. Our shelving is twenty-three years old, so, um, we have three, this would replace for three sections of, um, what we currently have for shelving. It is, um, you know, it's, yeah, well, it's twenty-three years old. It's a lot, has a lot of books on it, and, um, you know, it's, it's feeling that stress.
The shelving that you intend to purchase create more space or provide for the same storage capacity?
Well, that's a good question. Um, they, they are a little larger. They are hea, they're heavier, they're metal versus, uh, pressed wood. They have double-sided, they're double-sided, and they're a little taller. So, I would imagine with all, with that, um, likely, I could ask when to find out.
I have a general idea.
Yeah.
Are they similar to what she replaced over the summer?
The one, the first, one that was put together, yes.
Yeah, they did provide more space.
They did.
They did. I don't know how much, but they did.
Okay. So, we could move to page one hundred and nine. Let's see. This is, um, twenty-four, ten, five thirty-one is, um, a decrease. This is, uh, voice communication line. If you go to the next page, one-ten, the five thirty-two, five thirty-four, and five fifty-one are all level funded. The, um, administration, the travel, five eighty-one, that is a decrease of five hundred dollars. And, um, the general supplies line, um, twenty-four, ten, six eleven is level funded. And page one hundred and eleven, the dues is, is a slight increase. However, um, there is a cut in that, um, the assistant principals' dues for the New Hampshire, um, Association, school principals was, was cut. That was a, a cut that was made after this, after the presentation, my presentation.
Stacy's room, pardon.
That was Stacy's room.
That's right. Uh, okay, and then the last page in that section, uh, field trip admission, that is an increase. And again, that's due to, we've always done the two dollars, two trips, but, um, there was additional money cut out of this current budget. So, this just brings us up to what we proposed in the past, the, per two, two dollars per student for admission. We could move to one-fourth, page one-fourteen. This is, um, maintenance. Um, there are a few increases in, in these sections, uh, the twenty-six, twenty-four, eleven. Uh, we're now paying for backflow testing, which is two hundred dollars. That's the difference between this year's and next year's proposed budget. Our maintenance, uh, line for operation, building operation, the twenty-six, twenty-four, thirty-one, uh, that's also an increase. The, those are the things, the elevator contracts, the fire, all safety, safety-related. And, um, our repairs are a decrease. If you look at the twenty-six, twenty-four, thirty-two, that's, um, a pretty significant decrease for us from this year, thirty-two thousand to twenty-three. And there were additional reductions, as you can see, if you go on to the next page, um, there was three thousand dollars cut out from, um, for repointing for masonry and glass repointing.
And if I could point out, those are, um, on the building, you'll see the blocks, the glass...
Glass block.
Blocks. Um, when we just had our fire inspection, they noted some deterioration in the, um, cement around them, um, and asked us to have somebody come in and look at them because they're afraid some of them might, are at a point where they may fall in. Um, so, what we're going to do is have somebody, we cut some money out of that budget because that is in the renovation project. What we're looking to do is to take those out and replace them with windows. And so, we didn't want to invest a lot of money if that was something that was going to happen, but we need to address them. So, we put some money in there to have somebody come in, at least secure them and make sure they're not going to fall in, so...
Twenty-six, twenty-four, forty-two, it's on page one fifteen. That's, uh, storage unit is level funded, um, and maintenance mileage, the same, level funded. There is an increase in, um, the twenty-six, twenty-six, eleven line. That's, um, cleaning supplies for school. So is our P S and H projection, and our propane is a bit of an increase.
Propane is just for the kitchen, correct?
And the portable.
And portable, okay.
And twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-four, uh, there's a decrease in oil. And, um, a significant decrease in our new equipment, thirty-six hundred to eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, that's just, um, we'd asked for, uh, replacement, uh, equipment, but that was cut, um, a couple weeks ago. The, um, also, our twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-five, the replacement equipment, um, two-way radios were taken out. Uh, we are going to look for money in, um, especially at our funding for those because we do use them, um, for safety purposes, paraprofessionals, and, um, case manager communications. And then the twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-seven, replacement furniture, that is an increase. But again, that eight forty-six, there was more in there that was requested, but it, it was cut back. But that's basically just to, um, replace things when they become unsafe at school. Bookcases, tables, you know, we've had some, um, tables that the legs, we, you know, tried to move the legs and screwed it in different places at the bottom. And, um, you can only do so much of that before it, it, they start to fall apart. So, this would just be for replacement of unsafe, uh, furniture. And then page one seventeen, um, there is an increase on, uh, twenty-six, thirty, four thirty-one. That's the seal coat and, um, re-striping, repairing asphalt in the front end. That's the parking lot, our parking lot area and driveway. And I think Stacy mentioned that already. And then, um, on page one eighteen, there's an increase in repairs. Uh, these are, this is, um, twenty-six, forty, four thirty-two. It's, uh, computer repairs and network repairs. That's an increase.
And again, you'll see that in a lot of the line items because we're not replacing computers on a consistent basis. It means more in repairs and maintenance of them. So, um, these are line items you may not have seen before, but you will now see because if we're, if we're not consistently replacing and recycling, typically what we'll do is replace at the high school and recycle them down to the elementary, um, who don't need as upgraded. But when we're talking computers that we have in our classrooms that are nine, ten years old, they start to need repairs now. So, um, you'll see line items like that in there now.
And the last one on page one nineteen is our transportation for students at, um, field trips at seven hundred dollars a grade, is how we do that one. There's also our holiday concert practice where the, um, fourth graders go to the high school the day of their concert to do a run-through. And, uh, transportation for Step Up Transition Day at Mount Mitty Middle School is factored in there. And that's, that's an increase in that line for those, those items.
Do you have your pencils?
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess.
Maple Avenue's request for two thousand and eleven and twelve is four million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars. This year's budget, three million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars. Again, primarily salaries and benefits.
It's a total increase of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. Just in reference, if you're interested, the district line was an increase of three hundred and seventy-nine, four twenty-eight, and Bartlett was an increase of one ninety-three, oh twenty-three.
The district was what?
Three seventy-nine, four twenty-eight.
Any questions, Suzanne?
I guess you get up the hot seat now.
Okay, and Glen Lake is up next. Thank you, Suzanne. Five-minute break?
Yeah, why don't we take a quick break? We'll be back in session, and Leslie is on the hot seat.
Yeah, and how did I get the best presentation spot of the evening?
The last, and let me just point out...
You think we're going to be too tired to really drill you, I understand.
And just to preempt, Leslie's budget is only up fifty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, so we're skipping to the end, aren't we? I don't know if I know the whole story. Have you got any comments?
I, I will make it very quick.
Thirteen lines, she said.
Yes, there are only thirteen lines in the budget that had a change of more than one hundred dollars. So, we'll just go through those thirteen lines.
Would you, that have a change, uh, do you mean a change or an increase?
Increase or decrease.
Increase or decrease.
Yes. So, we'll, we'll just look at the ones where there was something more than a hundred dollars. Starting on page one twenty-one with the equipment rental, which is eleven hundred eighteen, four forty-two. We had an increase of three hundred and fifty dollars, um, due to underfunding the actual cost of the copy machine rental last year. Then on the next page, one twenty-two, eleven hundred eighteen, six forty-one, books and printed material. This is what several other people have talked about, that, uh, we were able to get the core reading program through ARA funds. So, it wasn't reflected in last year's budget, um, or the current budget, rather. But, the, next year we will have to purchase the consumables that go along with that program. So, that total comes to twenty-five hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is an increase of eighteen hundred and one dollars from the current year, but a decrease of fifteen hundred and forty-two dollars from the prior year's budget. Then on page one twenty-three, eleven hundred eighteen, seven thirty-five, replacement equipment. We're increasing from five hundred dollars to forty-two hundred and fifty dollars, which reflects the computer and network repairs no longer covered under warranty, as well as replacement wireless access points, which is a fancy word for airports. And as Stacy mentioned, this is, uh, due to buying fewer new computers and replacing, making repairs on what we already have.
As an example, I think Glen Lake just got some new computers that were originally at the high school that moved to the middle school that are now at Glen Lake.
Yes.
How did they skip Maple? They were well tested.
Yes.
So, uh, believe it or not, now you can skip all the way to page one hundred and thirty-seven. And we're on twenty-two, twenty-two, eighteen, six fifty-one. And this is an increase of two hundred dollars to fund the atomic learning. And Stacy, Stacy had mentioned that this was taken out of previous budgets, so it's, it's back in. Then on page one hundred and forty-one, twenty-four, ten, zero-zero, five thirty-one, voice communication. We have a reduction of three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars from the current year for the G four line charges, surcharges, and long distance. And also on the same page, twenty-four, ten, zero-zero, five thirty-two, which is data communication. We have a reduction of three hundred dollars from the current year for the cost of internet and filtering. On the same page, twenty-four, ten, zero-zero, five eighty-one, administrative travel. This is a reduction of three hundred dollars from the current year based upon, um, actual usage.
Yeah, well, it's because we changed it to your desk.
Right. Page one forty-four, twenty-six, twenty, zero-zero, four thirty-one, building maintenance. This is an increase of five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars to provide for the Honeywell Annual Maintenance Agreement. We were the only building that did not have this before, and now with five years of use, we have had boiler problems, air exchange system problems, the rooftop unit has had a problem, computer controls. So, this puts us in the same shape as the other buildings where we have a company that will come in and take care of all of our problems.
You mean, you, you mean your maintenance problems?
Yes.
I didn't know that person was like psychiatrists there with the desk, it's like time.
Page one forty-five, twenty-six, twenty, zero-zero, six eleven. This is an increase of two hundred and seven dollars or three percent to provide for the increased cost of paper and cleaning supplies. Also on the same page, twenty-six, twenty, zero-zero, six twenty-two, an increase of nine hundred and seventy-two dollars for electricity based upon the P S and H projection. On the same page, twenty-six, twenty, zero-zero, six twenty-three, propane, and we do heat with propane. This is an increase of two thousand and fifty... This is an increase of 2,050 dollars for propane over the current year, but a reduction of 6,450 dollars over the prior year. So just to put it in perspective. And still on the same page, 262000731 for new equipment. This is a reduction of 140 dollars from the current year and also a reduction of 500 dollars from the prior year.
I'm going to ask a quick question. I see that we cut a sledgehammer. I got to ask why Mr. Leo needed a sledgehammer. I have to. I can't resist.
I was told not to bring up the sledgehammer, but.
For falling search protectors.
I do want to point out, one of the things you will see in all of the budgets now is search protectors. It wasn't highlighted in the other two budgets, but you'll see that. And when you get to the middle school and high school, it's a more significant number. Based on fire, fire, the fire department inspections, we have to replace our, our search protectors every five years. Is that correct, Jerry? Five years. So we have, Jerry has come up with a system. They're all now dated. So that we can, if you didn't know, on your search particular, actually a date when they were purchased. So we have, we put ourselves into a little cycle of replacement. So that, we won't have any that are over five years old because they will fail us on our inspection if they are, so.
How do they know they're over five years old?
They look at them and there's a date on them. But we're not.
It's five years from the date of manufacture or five years from the date of put in service? If it's five years from the date of in service, I don't understand how they can figure it out.
Anyway, so we need to put some money in for search protectors. We have purchased at least 200 of them so far to replace really old ones and to get into a cycle. So you will see that in the budget.
You can't cycle them down like we do the computers?
No, that is, that is not what sledgehammers.
Stacy, you didn't get into the question. The sledgehammers?
What was the sledgehammer?
We have sledgehammers. The issue was, we sometimes don't have them right immediately available in every building. We have them as a district.
When do we have a burden of sledgehammer?
So they thought we needed a sledgehammer at Glen Lake. So we thought we could live without it and we just make it available.
This is what happens when you're budgeting.
Sledgehammer gets cut. We have a whole conversation about it.
All right.
Mr. Leo wasn't getting seen on it or something. You know, I just thought that, you know, a sledgehammer.
This is wrong.
Was that a ten or a third?
Last but not least, this is the, the last line that had a change to it on page 147. 263000431 for grounds. We have a reduction of 1,810 dollars from the current year.
And what did you cut?
The page, the markings. The markings, because we had done them. So we, again, we put those on a cycle so that we can do them. And then the, the next line is landscape work, which we, was an increase of 1,000. And that was really just to start to look at the landscape around Glen Lake. Now that the school's five years old, some of the plantings have died, some have lived, some need to be looked at. And so just to kind of look at the landscape of the building now.
And Mr. Labork, can you tell us where the, what the starting was and what the finishing was?
I can't, but Leslie.
I can. Oh, all right.
Yeah, I'm dedicated.
Last year, we were at 1,106,547 dollars. And this year is 1,158,140 dollars. So essentially, a little under 52,000 dollar increase.
Pushed most of it to salary and benefits, contractual obligations again.
Yep.
And that concludes budget presentations for tonight. On Wednesday, you'll hear the middle school and the high school. Same process.
Now, Mr. Hug, you, you, you have to follow her. And she did it really quickly.
I will.
Can you do it in less time than Leslie?
I can do it inside right now.
No. We want to see you on Wednesday.
Before I turn, I have a question for Stacy. Based on your presentation, you said that this budget was just what was needed. We're staying even, possibly even slipping backwards. Is that, my question is, do we feel as a board that that is responsible? I'm not sure that it is responsible to produce a budget that allows for the risk of slipping backwards. So I just wanted to get that out of you.
I, I want to agree with, because I was going to make a similar comment in that, you know, thank all the principals and the superintendent for an amazing budget. But it scared me listening to tonight, how much we are taking out of maintenance lines and repair lines. And if we remember, well, I was on the school board at the time, when we had to redo the high school because our science labs were a mess. And we were, I don't want us to get to that point in our schools again where it costs us so much money because we've nitpicked every little thing out of it. I think it's irresponsible because I think in the long run, I mean, it may make people happy now, but it's not going to make them happy later on when we have to fix it all because we've let it go for so long. And I remember, we got nailed by people before about, oh, why the heck aren't you maintaining?
This is where the rubber hits the road.
What's that?
This is when it makes a difference, when the community is viewed from the outside as not supporting the student. That's when the rubber hits the road. That's when people start leaving. Or more importantly, not coming, not choosing to live in a community like Ofsted. I think your point is well taken. I think one of the things that we may want to think about reflecting on, looking at is, when you look at the middle column on your budgets, you'll notice there are lots of places where there are zeros. And so if you go from zero to 1,000, it looks like a thousand dollar increase. If you go to the left and you see that two years ago, it was 2,500 dollars, we haven't even recovered. Now, obviously, you have to look at each line individually. And depending upon what line it is, that either is simply because we didn't need something and didn't have anything to spend it on, or it's because we decided to forego it for a year. And now we're trying to get something that we went without.
We did forego a lot of the budget items last year to try to cut the budget.
We did. And so I think, I think that bears, I think it bears looking at.
And I think some, I think to some degree, we're cutting off our nose despite our face too because we work really hard. Our administrators are awesome. Our teachers are awesome at writing grants, getting money to come into our community all of the time. And we're making drastic, drastic cuts like this. And then we have unanticipated revenue at the end of the year that we can't do anything with except for to give it back to the town, to make the tax rate look lower so that we get nailed because our increase looks higher the next year. And we're taking, we're really putting our maintenance in peril. But then we're going to end up giving a million dollars back, you know, at the end of the year. I, I don't get what that balancing act is. I, I don't think it's, scares me.
At some level, I think that may be the place where a, a lot of our concerns are really, I mean, they exist every place. But if there are things that we're foregoing or not doing this in that budget, then I think we need to seriously look as you go through the year at what we have left to spend and recognizing what projects and things we haven't done. And so to the extent that we can do things.
And I, I totally agree with that in the sense of we really need to, I mean, the, two of the largest areas that I consider we've cut in are maintenance and technology. You'll see in this budget, the only technology that's in there is five smart boards for the middle school and five for the high school. They did put in a request for replacement of the computers here at the high school, which I cut. It's the first year it's been a request. So I, again, how many years can you, I mean, the Glen Lake's looking at probably 10-year-old computers. Ran it their kindergarten, so they're not using high advanced software with them. But it is accessible. It is accessibility to the internet. It's making sure that can happen. Many more years of that, several more years of those computers, they're not going to be capable of maintaining websites or holding on to information. So those are two areas we cut. I am sure there's stuff that you didn't put in this budget that you're not seeing. I'm sure there is because my, the directive from me was, I want to see them reasonable. I want to see them responsible. And I think the administrators took that seriously. And so while I cut line items, I can guarantee you there's line items that didn't make it into the budget because they were following that directive.
I was, I think that I recognize many, maybe not all, but many of the CRTs sitting on those tables from 2000. I might be wrong about some of them, but we are making an investment here.
I tried to make the point that because we're almost a million dollars below the default in this year's budget, there isn't going to be a fund balance at the end of the year. I mean, we've had tight budgets before, but this is.
This is even tighter than this year's.
Yeah, it's, well, when you're starting almost a million dollars under, you're, you're in a hole to begin with, so. But what happened this year, where we were from our own budget, able to not spend 1.2 million dollars, that's not going to be possible at the end of this fiscal year. So the impact on the tax rate, it may be okay this year, but next year.
We're just putting it off.
It's, you know, I've heard folks on the budget committee say, well, you'll know when the tax bills will go out. You'll hear bodies falling all over town. Well, you're not going to hear them this year, but next year you sure are. Because there isn't going to be much of an unreserved fund balance. And we're not going to have ARA, ARA money to, you know, pay for some of our expenses with.
One of the other pieces is, because we're all affected by the same climate, are the likelihood, I think, that there's going to be unanticipated revenue decreases. So you have, you have narrower budgets, you have, you're giving up things. And then you have little if no unanticipated return. I mean, it's, it's not doom and gloom, but it's realistic to look at the landscape as it exists. And that's how it exists.
And I'm always hearing about, well, everything went 13% this year, the tax. Well, excuse me, you got a dollar back last year, but you get no recognition of that fact.
Well, at, at the end of the day, I think our, our biggest concern is, is the one that's been stated around the table.
Oh, absolutely.
Everybody like, which is, this is really aggressive. And we're looking at it only in terms of last year. We can't look at it in terms of just last year. We need to look at it in terms of the last two years. So as we complete our process, I think we need to be very careful about what we present. And that we understand that our, our mission here is to present a responsible budget, a thoughtful budget, but one that is designed to achieve an objective, which is to educate our students.
And I think too, in, in doing our deliberations, we have to keep in mind that there's, there's a yea and a nay to everything. And a lot of the naysayers are very loud and very vocal. There's a lot of people that support our schools and feel that it's important to them to support our schools. They're just not as vocal. So I think sometimes we have to realize that just because some people are very loud, it doesn't mean necessarily that they're the majority.
Well, I guess to that I would say, the great silent majority needs to get out to the deliberative session at the very least because that's where the rubber hits the road. And it's okay to not pay a lot of attention to it, but up until that point, you, you've got to.
Because a lot of people just sit back and know they have a responsibility to pay the taxes that are accrued to them. And they're willing to do it. And they don't, you know, they just do it because it's their responsibility to do it. So we don't hear from those people, but we sure do hear from the other people. But we can't just take one side and not consider the other one as well.
So many people, because I wasn't here in March for the election, but I had so many people tell me they couldn't vote no because they thought the no meant they were voting against the school board's budget.
Right.
So we, we've got to do something for folks to know that it's okay in some instances to vote no.
My kids are the same, like, what?
Yeah, I know. Because even, even a default next year would be not good.
The fault's going to be higher than our proposed budget.
Probably, yeah. So, I mean.
It'll be significant, yeah. I think you're, you're in the right ballpark then. Alrighty, we'll be back here on Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Oh joy.
Accepted, seconded by Lori. All in favor? That's unanimous. I'm going to take it right too, yeah. I want to thank, I want to thank the administrators for coming out tonight. We look forward to seeing your faces again on Wednesday night.